Of a local group of citizens called Protect Oregon's Progress. And other residents who are concerned by the impacts of global warming. We are here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to take seriously the threat climate change poses to our community. Including drought, fires, disease, displacement, and severe and erratic weather. Your actions now have the potential to affect our community for decades to come. As you plan for the future of Wasco County, we ask that you look at things through a lens of climate change. The time for debating whether or not this is real is over. Climate change is upon us. Now it's time for all leaders to take action. We see three major questions that we should all be asking ourselves as we make decisions going forward. How can we mitigate the impacts of climate change? How can we adapt to the impacts of climate change? And what can we do to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions? Obviously, the answers to these questions deserve much more thought and discussion than we have time for today. We hope this is just the beginning. It is essential to acknowledge that there is a cost to act, but there is also a cost to not act. Consider, for example, that a third of US residents live in a county that was struck by a climate-fueled disaster just in the last three months. Many of those events set new records and led to billions of dollars in damages. Locally, I think it's safe to say that most of us don't want more record heat waves like we had this past summer. Globally, the newest report by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change informs us that the planet is entering the hottest period of the last 125,000 years. Several of our neighboring communities are way ahead of us on this front, which is good news for us. We can learn from their experiences. This is certainly not something our community has to figure out on its own. So we want to emphasize that this is an opportunity for our community, an opportunity to be leaders in a changing economy, to establish local renewable sources of energy, to keep costs down, and to work together toward a more livable future. We urge that you begin this planning along with our other city councils within the county, the port, and other local stakeholders to start building a healthier, more vibrant, and more resilient community for us all. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. I'm glad I asked. Wait till the end. You should wait till the end because we do have an update on a renewable project later than intended today, so.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Anybody else quickly that has a public comment? Going, going, gone. We'll come back to that too if I remember. But we'll go now to our COVID update. Shelley and Martha are here. And Martha's new, so Martha, I'm going to turn it over to you. Maybe you can introduce yourselves to us.
Good morning. I am Martha McInnes, and I'm a little nervous this morning, so forgive me. None of you are really intimidating, but I'm not Dr. McDonald, so. I am the newly hired clinical program supervisor at North Central Public Health District. And I started as a public health nurse about six months ago. So I will.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Martha? It's kind of tough to hear you.
Is that a little bit better?
That is a little better.
Okay. We have some microphone issues around here, so I'll do the best I can to speak up. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen with you all, and I am presenting Dr. McDonald's slides. Can everyone see that? Okay, great. So I'm just going to run through things as Dr. McDonald would normally do. And I believe we reserve questions for the end. Okay. So this is the county-level data, total cases and deaths to date. And we, in the counties, have unfortunately had, each county has had a death, at least one, in the last month. A pretty beloved member of Sherman County actually passed away quite recently, so. COVID cases, this is month by month. So you can see from back in December and January when we had our initial surge. Last month, we kind of knocked that out of the park, unfortunately, not in a good way. Dr. McDonald included Hood River in these numbers to demonstrate a little bit how even a slightly higher vaccination rate can actually make a difference in the case. Now, that's not purely, you know, it's not in isolation, but certainly has made a difference. You can see from Hood River to Wasco County, it's a pretty significant difference. Cases per week, this is actually slightly good news for us. You can see the Epi curve, we were pretty high, but our cases have started to go down. We're still staying steady with about 20-ish cases per day at this point, but you can see the trend is heading downward, which is good. This is our one-week metrics. I think actually I probably should have changed this. I think this is actually from September, September 5th, as you see, those dates should have been changed. My apologies for that. And our case count, so it was 97 for that week in September, the most recent week. This has actually improved. It was over 150 the week prior for Wasco County alone. Our percent positivity rate, 8.4%, that basically means that we are testing quite a bit of people, so that is a good thing. We're testing a lot of people, only some of them are coming up positive. That's good. That means we are testing a good portion of the population, and our testing has definitely increased a lot lately. In contrast, Gillum County, their test positivity rate is 33%. That means that one out of three people that they are testing is positive. That is slightly concerning because that does sort of indicate that we're not doing enough testing. Because more people are testing positive, but very likely there's more people that are affected that are not getting tested. And overall, our numbers in Oregon, our test positivity is generally lower with the exception of Gillum County. And our cases per 100,000, Gillum and Sherman are doing pretty well. We are only slightly higher than Oregon at this point, than the state. This is the Epi curve for the state of Oregon, and if I could put those slides together with Wasco County and Oregon, this actually demonstrates that the Epi curves are really quite close. So our Epi curve is mirroring the states pretty closely. This highlighted area says that the cases, there may still be cases to be reported in that time period, so this number is still in flux. But you can see that things have gone up, hopefully peaked, and are beginning to head down. I'm guessing that with increased cases coming in in this period, it may be slightly higher than that, but overall, the trend is heading down, which is really good news. This is the hospitalized cases. You can see the curve is almost identical and beginning to eat down just a bit. And this is COVID-positive patients in the hospital, patients in ICU beds, and patients on ventilators. This is for Region 6, so this is our region specifically, which you're probably all familiar with. And again, very similar to what the Epi curve showed, also on the decline, which is a good thing. So vaccines, this is something that I definitely can speak on a little bit more clearly because this is what I started working on six months ago when I was hired and have been running the readiness center clinic until it closed in June. So currently, and I'm going to demonstrate why these numbers are so hard and why you may keep hearing different percentages reported for each county on vaccinations. I'm going to see if I can, so these numbers that Dr. McDonald recorded, Wasco County would be about 66, 67%. Gillum, 45 to 46. Sherman, about 62%. And then she threw in Hood River again as a comparison, which is just shy of 80. Now, the Oregon Health Authority has public tableaus that you can, data dashboards, where you can look up this information yourself. I'm going to pull one of these over to the screen right now. This is a great lesson and kind of cautionary tale in making sure that you look at what data percentage means. So here, for example, Wasco County shows that we are at 70.1% right here. Note that this is counting the population over 18 years old. So we are at 70.1% over 18. That does not include all of the eligible population. Now, if we move to another dashboard that OHA has. And I'm going to go to the county data. This shows essentially that Wasco County has vaccinated 55.9%. Now, this includes ages 12 and up and does not include federal data. So when I say federal data, that means the Veterans Affairs came out and vaccinated a large portion of the population. They did not have to initially report in the state database. And so the people they vaccinated weren't captured in these numbers. So I wanted to illustrate that if you get questions from constituents about, well, why are these percentages different? You just have to, it's, it's, there's a lot of different places that you can find these numbers and a lot of ways that it is reported. So where are all these cases coming from? I'm not going to go through this list in detail, but you know, long-term care facilities are definitely part of that. We don't have any currently that are active, some that are going through, you know, they have to go 28 days without, before we kind of clear the outbreak. School activities, certainly, gatherings. The Delta variant, as I'm sure you've all heard about, has definitely caused a significant surge because it is incredibly contagious. Vaccinated people can transmit the virus, although at this moment, the data is telling us probably less than unvaccinated people. I did, this was a question that came up yesterday at the Board of Health meeting, and I did do a literature search. And there is some emerging data from some locations that people have read about that show that the amount of virus in the nasal passages of people who are vaccinated is quite high. But whether that leads to additional transmission is not necessarily panning out in real life. So we know that vaccinated people can transmit the virus, and that's where some of these breakthrough cases are coming from. So as far as we have, as far as what MCPHD is currently working on, case investigation and contact tracing, we, and Shelley can jump in to help with the hires that we've done because it's been kind of back and forth, but we do have a new case investigator coming. And I believe we have hired a new disease intervention specialist, which is Jeremy, who was here before as our lead. He departed last week, and this is a person who come into that position. We have been offering the school support with contact tracing and mitigation strategies. Offering support to long-term care facilities and other congregate settings. And as far as testing, I mentioned that our testing had increased significantly. So we were able to hire on two additional testing specialists for the short term. And working with our MRC, Medical Reserve Corps volunteers, and training some of those folks to come in and help us do testing. You know, our testing is on a daily basis, completely filled up. We are offering testing five days a week at this point, Monday through Friday. We're also working with community partners to increase testing at sites like Solilo and the Innu sites. And we are going to be offering testing tomorrow at, not at the community meal site, but actually the Pellet House shelter, and offering vaccinations as well. We're continuing to, in our social media platforms, kind of combat misinformation that seems to be running rampant. We have a misinformation alert campaign that runs in conjunction with the Public Health Communications Collaborative, which is a great website that talks about and goes into detail with false claims through social media and how to talk to the public about them. And then continuing to move forward with our, kind of our vaccination distribution plan, which involves assessing our community, providing education, and continuing to increase locations and sites where the vaccine is distributed. So kind of moving on to, as she titles this hot topic, so vaccines for children under 12. The estimate keeps moving, as it does for many of these predictions. So the last we had heard, ages 5 through 11, was going to be November for Pfizer. And then ages six months to four years, this estimated approval would happen in January. Now, these, I think, are conservative estimates, and we've seen in the past that approvals may happen faster than we expect. So we've already been working with the pediatric offices and the clinics in both Sherman and Gillum Counties to make sure that there are sites at medical provider offices where these littles can get vaccinated in a comfortable space. We also launched a campaign for education, encouraging not just childhood vaccination, but discussion about the COVID vaccine with parents and their providers. Encouraging parents to bring their kids in for a well-child check for immunizations by offering a brand-new backpack full of school supplies. And that has all of the clinics locally participating and has been has been a great motivator for getting people in. So one thing I also want to touch on, vaccine number three, third dose, additional dose versus a booster. It was a little difficult to have the White House announce in mid-August that boosters were going to be available for everyone as of Monday. While also simultaneously, the approval for third doses for immunocompromised individuals came out, and that caused a lot of confusion. And I just want to be really clear, there's a big difference between additional dose for immunocompromised people versus a booster dose for everyone else. The third dose for immunocompromised people is approved for both Pfizer and the Verna, and is happening right now. The reason for this is that if someone did not have a functioning immune system at the time they received their first doses, they may not have had a good immune response. And so in those cases, that person needs three doses to be fully vaccinated. In contrast, we know that over time, people's immunity, once they have a vaccine series, can decrease over time. And at some point, they may need a booster to boost their immune system. Hopefully, that makes sense to everyone, and I'm sure I'll get some questions about that. We don't know at this moment what is going to happen with booster doses. This Friday, there is a meeting, the ACIT meeting, which is scientists from the FDA and CDC that come together and review the available data and make a recommendation to the, to the CDC. So we're waiting to hear what's going to happen, and I'm sure you've read a lot of news stories. There's a lot of conflict in the scientific community right now about the data. The other hot topics, I suppose. And I'm sure you've all heard about a lot of these things in the news. The possible, the White House plan to mandate vaccines in employers with over 100 employees. Mandating vaccines for all federal workers and contractors. Mandating vaccines at all hospitals and clinics that accept Medicaid and Medicare. That one, we are really already facing here in Oregon because that has already been mandated. Requiring employers to provide time off for vaccinations, and then their plan for booster vaccines, which they have already kind of talked about. They do want to increase at-home testing. Not exactly sure, we're not exactly sure how that's going to be operationalized, but getting testing out to the community right now. The at-home tests that are available, say at Fred Meyer or Rite Aid or anyplace else, they typically sell out very quickly. So once they get their shipment in, within one to two days, all the tests are off the shelf. So trying to figure out how to increase the supply and get those into the hands of people. Free COVID-19 screening for all schools. State of Oregon is already offering that, both diagnostic and screening testing for any school that signs up. And then also providing free monoclonal antibody treatments. Now, monoclonal antibody treatment is, I actually need to see if Dr. McDonald, I think this comes up in a later slide, and I'll explain that in a little more detail. Yes, here it is, in quite a bit of detail. So monoclonal antibody therapy is a relatively new treatment that was approved for people who are at high risk for hospitalization that contract COVID, that test positive for COVID. This is an outpatient therapy, so this is something that can be done before somebody would be hospitalized. So criteria, they have to have had an onset of symptoms in the past 10 days. Their symptoms have to be mild to moderate, meaning they are not in the hospital already. There is a list of criteria for what makes people high-risk for going into the hospital. Initially, this was only approved as an IV, an intravenous infusion, which meant that you had to have an IV put in, and it had to infuse over a period of time. It is now available as a subcutaneous injection, which is, you know, for injections over a period of days. It does reduce the risk of hospitalization in this population by about 50%, which is, which is excellent. It is available at Mid Pointe Medical Center. If someone presents to the emergency room, this is something that is offered to them. They are also looking to, they're going to be putting up a tent, basically, to be able to offer this to patients. Because of course, if someone tests positive for COVID, you don't want to necessarily bring them to, you know, the infusion center, the Lilo Cancer Center, where all the cancer patients are. So they're looking at ways to be able to offer that to the community in a safe way. And this is, of course, another very hot topic right now, using ivermectin, which is an anti-parasitic drug. And there is a lot of controversy about this. Currently, the studies, and I'm sure people will disagree with this statement, however, current evidence that we have says that it is not effective against COVID-19. It does not prevent hospitalization, it does not minimize symptoms, and it can be very harmful in the way that people are accessing it. Because the doses in humans are much different than the doses in livestock and pets. So a lot of folks have gone to Coastal, for example, to get ivermectin because that is a place where it's available, not by prescription. But unfortunately, people don't understand the dosing piece of things. So calls to poison control centers and ED visits for overdose of ivermectin have actually increased. I think it's something like 30-fold in the past couple of months. So it really is not safe for humans in high doses, and it really is not making a difference. So please encourage people not to use ivermectin. All right. I believe that is it. And I'm certain there's going to be questions, so I will do my best.
Nice job, Martha. You did an awesome job. Shelley, do you have anything to add before we go to questions?
No, I do not. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start with the commissioners. But I would encourage folks, if you have questions, the chat's there. If you're joined us on the meeting here and not on the phone, you can throw something in the chat, and Martha can take a look at it. But we'll start with Kathy. Do you have any questions?
Well, actually, I don't, if you can believe it. I actually saw this presentation last night at our Health District Board meeting. So I had an opportunity to ask my questions then, and I think Martha actually addressed those during her presentation. But I did want to say that it was an excellent presentation, Martha, and I really, really appreciated the slide around the vaccination percentage variabilities. That really helps. So, thanks.
All right, Steve.
Yeah, that was a good presentation, and welcome, Martha, to the area, and thank you for that good update. Thank you.
All right. You've done a great job. I have a couple of questions. Let's see, my first one is related to, and I don't really know a lot about this, but you hear about this a little bit too, it's COVID long haul. What is that? And is it prevalent? Is it real? Is it, what's going on with that? And I heard today from someone who has this, and they were saying that ivermectin actually is something that is being used to treat this.
So I'll do the best that I can to answer the question. I may have to come back to you. As far as I know, ivermectin is not being used to treat COVID long hauler. But I will look that up specifically, and I will get back to you with an answer. So COVID long-hauler syndrome is, we don't know a lot about it at this point. The rates in people who have had COVID, I've seen anywhere from 5 to 20%. So it could be a very prevalent, a very prevalent thing. Of course, numbers are what they are, and in research, and can be a little bit variable, so that's why I give such a wide variation. So it basically is kind of symptoms that can happen for months post-COVID. They can fluctuate, they can come and go, things like severe fatigue, brain fog, fever. There have been people who continue to spike fevers for months afterwards at random times. So it's kind of this, sometimes it's pain, sometimes it's joint pain. So it's this sort of big cluster of symptoms that we're trying to figure out. People are definitely doing more research on it right now to understand. And it can be very debilitating for some people. There was some recent data that came out that said people who are vaccinated, if they do get a breakthrough case of COVID, their rate of getting long haulers is cut in half by 50%.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
I will make note of the ivermectin question, and I'll get that answer for you.
Okay, yeah. They're also, they're getting twice-a-day barometric pressure, barometric chamber treatments as well for whatever they have, which is quite the thing. Okay, my other question was, and I'm pretty sure I know the answers, but you mentioned that vaccinated people can transmit the virus, and you're doing some research on that. But is that the case only if they actually have COVID, so if they have a breakthrough case? I mean, if they, if they're vaccinated, they don't have COVID, they're not transmitting it, right?
That is correct. The hard part is asymptomatic.
Exactly.
So somebody could have COVID, not know it, and then transmit it. And that is nearly impossible to do research on unless you had an extremely well-designed study, and you were proactively looking at that. And I don't know of any, I am, I'm sure that someone is doing some research on it, but I don't know specifically of a study that is designed looking at that exact thing.
Yeah, and of course, if you're asymptomatic, you're probably not going to get tested. And you guys are not encouraging people to get tested unless you have symptoms. So, okay, all right, there's a couple of questions in the chat.
Okay, the, the first question, what do we know about the rate of positivity in our homeless population? I don't have that information. And I'm not certain that I can get it, but I will, I will see what I can do as far as getting those numbers. It's, that is a difficult statistic. Tomorrow, I am actually going to the shelter to offer vaccines and to do some rapid testing. And I can certainly talk with my contacts there to see if they have a sense. And I can respond with an update. But that particular statistic isn't something that I have easy access to. Second question, when did the monoclonal antibody therapy become available? I don't have the exact date, but it's been within the last month that it's really started to become approved and available. It is very expensive, that's one of the things that I did want to say. It's about $2,000 per injection. So about $8,000 for one person to be treated. However, and this is a really important public health, this is, this is why we have to think in a public health perspective. We spend $8,000 now, but 50% of the people that take it are not in the hospital. And if you can imagine a hospital bill with somebody with COVID, it can reach an upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So an $8,000 investment could potentially save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, MCMC is offering it. I know that Skyline Hospital also has it available. And those are the two locations within our area. And I, I know that there have been more clinics that have been interested in potentially offering it as well.
Excellent, all right, that's, well, that was all the questions in the chat. Is there anybody else that has a question? If so, you can unmute yourself now and we can address it. Questions? All right, Martha and Shelley, thank you so much for being here. Nice job Martha, you did an excellent job. That was very informational and lots of information. We very much appreciate both of you being here and of course, your staffs and all that you're doing for us. All right, see you guys later. All right, we're running slightly behind. That was the only thing we did have on our discussion list though, so that's good. And we will, I will turn it over to Kathy Clark on our fee schedule ordinance hearing. And I think I have to read something, right?
Yes, you do.
Better find the right one. Do I read it right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, we will recess from our regular meeting to open the first of two public hearings regarding amendments to the Wasco County fee schedule ordinance. An official recording is being made of what is said at this hearing. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. Therefore, persons addressing the commission are requested to begin by stating their name and address. Speak clearly. Only one person may speak at a time. This is the time for presentation of testimony and there's not going to be any debate allowed. How we're going to do is we're going to take, I guess we're going to have, this is the order of presentation. We're going to have our staff presentation first. Then we'll take testimony for anybody wishing to speak. And then we'll have questions from the commission. And then that will be the end of it today and we'll have a second hearing on this. So Kathy?
Thank you. And so, thank you commissioners. And this is an annual process for the county. At some point during the summer, I reach out to the directors, asking them for their input on fee increases. This year, because it's been a number of years since many of the fees have been increased. Those departments that did not submit particular increases that they justified. They were, all those were increased by 3%. Some of those, for instance, the clerk doesn't have many fees that aren't dictated by this, by statute, by state statute, that we really can't increase or decrease. We just do that based on what the state tells us. But these are the departments that had a 3% across the board increase. There are a few fees that are across county departments. Those are for copies and researching. The finance only has a couple of fees, stop payments and return to items. Information systems has professional services. Assessment and taxation for mapping changes, farm enforced disqualifications. The county clerk has marriage fees, public works, road vacations and permits. And the sheriff's office, which did do a 33% increase to fingerprinting. Everything else was raised by 3%. Community corrections and hopefully Fritz is here. I have not looked down the list to see if he's made it on to the meeting. Oh, good, so I'll go over this briefly. And then when it comes around to questions, Fritz can answer your questions for his department because he did. And Fritz, stop me if I've put anything up here that doesn't accurately reflect the changes in your department. So the new fees were for the electronic monitoring program. The setup fee is $25 and the electronic monitoring daily fee is $5. The interstate compact fee increased from 50 to $100. It's an involved process. And most counties around the state are charging between 100 and 150. So Fritz did the low end of that spread. The remaining fees were increased by $5, except for the travel permit. They keep that intentionally low to encourage their clients to be honest in reporting when they are traveling out of the county. Supervision fees, this is not shown on the fee schedule. This is something that I'll definitely let Fritz come back and speak to. Those are going to be going away. And there is some voting that's going to happen at his organization. And they did not want to put directors in the position of having to pay back fees collected from October to February when they expect the legislature will address this and put some defining language in.
So they will.
And let's see if we can find who's not muted. There we go. The planning department, and I know Kelly is here. And she put an extensive memo into the board packet explaining this. I've just very briefly covered it. The fees outside the scenic area application is 5%. Most of those fees haven't been increased since 2014. Following this, she anticipates annual increases based on the CPI. CPI this year, I think is four and a half percent. So 5% when it hasn't been increased for many years is, is a reasonable. The board in previous meetings has asked that we look at the scenic area application fees and put them closely aligned to what the actual costs are for those more involved applications. There is some tracking data available for them to make this, the expedited and a full review to do data that gives them the numbers that they need to know what the actual costs are. The other areas in that, in the scenic area didn't have tracking data. So she increased those by 5%. GIS has new fees at, for new addresses, $52 each. The labor rate is set at $82 per hour. Other fees were increased by between two and a half and 14%. They base their fees on the shop rate for custom work. And that is calculated by averaging the labor costs, the server costs and the network costs. And those fees have not gone up for a number of years. Building codes, so the board has seen these previously. They were set in 2014 and adopted by the county when the building codes program came to the county. We needed to get a fee schedule up and there's a process with the state for that. And we didn't have time to go through that when we took the program on. So we just adopted the fees that were already in place. And those new fees were proposed in 2020 and brought to the board. And the board determined that because there were significant reserves and that the general economic circumstance of our community was such that they wanted to delay increasing those fees. So the fees that you see in today's packet are identical to the ones that were previously proposed in 2020. However, if and when you vote on this building code, on this fee schedule, these will not be included because there is a process with the state that requires us to do some specific noticing to the state. And because we didn't want to go through that process and then have the board not put these in place. So today is just sort of a temperature check for the building codes fees. And if the board deems that those are suitable, we will then go through that process with the state and bring it back to you at a future hearing. So at the next, at the second hearing for the, this fee schedule, and it will show the existing building codes fees. And that's all.
All right, thank you Kathy. We will then, that's the, that's the end of the presentation, right?
Yes, but I'm, I'm putting it back to community corrections in case you have questions for Fritz.
Okay, I thought we'd open it up, according to my thing, we're going to open it up to public comments at this time, all right? Or am I wrong?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments on this, on the proposed fee schedule. And again, this is our first public hearing on this. Well, we won't be making a decision today. We will be taking information and we will have another public hearing coming up. Do we know when that is yet Kathy?
It will be at the October 6th board session unless the board deems that it should be later.
Okay, so that's the plan. So anyway, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment now. Anybody that is, has a public comment, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and we'll try to deal with getting your comments. And if you're on the phone, I'm not sure if anybody's on the phone. I think it's star six, unmute yourself.
Sure, you have a hand raised.
There is a hand raised? Oh Debbie, okay, go ahead Debbie. You're not unmuted if you're talking. Debbie Ferrer.
Sorry, that was an accidental hand raised, maybe from earlier. I don't have anything to say at this time.
All right, no problem, thank you very much. Anybody else have any, want to make any comments on the proposed fee ordinance update? If not, we're going to close the comments going, going down. Okay, all right, so now we'll go on to questions from the commission to staff about any of these or comments. Commissioners?
I can't see anybody because we have the document up, but yeah, okay. Yeah, I, you know, I'm curious about this. I think this is the most comprehensive fee schedule I've seen. That really hits all the departments. And what kind of struck me is how it appears there's such randomness in the requests. Anywhere from 3% across the board to 5% to, you know, some, some departments looking at a CPI. Then there's a 33% in fingerprinting, 50%. There's all the way up to an actual 200% increase in a particular fee for somebody living in the scenic area. And I was, you know, and it immediately, I started looking for a policy or some guidance that might be in place for how we actually, you know, increase fees. And I couldn't find one. And I guess I would ask staff if that is correct. We don't really have a set of guidelines or a policy that I could refer to? Is that correct?
All right, who wants to take that one? Tyler, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll take that, thanks. Yeah, that's correct, because there's so many different aspects that go into setting your fees. So we have statutory fees that are changed by the legislature every year. And so, you know, you get things like clerk's fees. In fact, that fingerprinting may be one of those fees on the concealed handgun licenses that went up per the legislature. I don't see Wayne or Scott on here. But the way we approach this is the legislative fixes our departments will put in. And then our departments will also take a look at the fee schedules. And those fees that are needing to be adjusted, something different than kind of just an incremental increase on an annual basis, will address those during this period and get that information to Kathy to update those fee schedules. And then kind of the floor of this entire thing, which is something the commission has been saying over the last several years is we don't want to see fees sitting stagnant for long periods of time and then having large increases at any given period, you know, say five years out. And then we have a 15% or 20% increase. And so we've just put on this fee schedule, kind of that floor 3% so that our fee schedules trend with our costs and continue to move forward. But, you know, to answer your specific question, it would be almost impossible to set up policy given the amount of variability that, that we see in the different scenarios that are out there. Whether it be legislative, actual cost base versus work effort fees. And then kind of this, just across the board incremental increase.
Okay, thanks for that. I still, you know, as I listen to you Tyler, I'm, I kind of hear some guidelines anyway that we could possibly put into a policy or at least some sort of guidance going forward. Because again, this just seems all over the map and how we're looking at this. And I'm, I'm really quite uncomfortable with this, I'll just put that out there. And so, you know, I think, you know, I certainly have questions about some of the individual fees here. And I don't know if we want to go into that or if I want, if Commissioner Hagy, you want to give, you know, I'm kind of talking about an overarching issue that I see. But I do have particular questions about some of the fees, so.
Yeah, I think, I think Kathy, I think now is the time to maybe ask those questions because we're going to have another public hearing as well. So if we have questions, let's put them out there and try to get at least a dialogue about them. Because if there, if we want to make or want them to look at, the staff to look at something else or consider something else, you know, we can talk about that today.
Okay, all right, um, let's see. Oh, I had a question for Fritz. What is an interstate compact? Because that fee has doubled, I'm not, I'm not, I have no idea what that is.
There is federal law that dictates how people who are placed on supervision in one state who want to move to another state may do so. Every state federally is required to collect at least $50 when they receive somebody. And that's what we have done on our end for G's since I started. We have never changed this fee. What I've found over the years is that, to be honest, it's an online system we use. There's a lot of back and forth between counties. We've encountered a lot of conflicts in the nature of supervision or legal requirements placed on people and negotiating things with the courts and attorneys. And so it's a lot of, it's actually a lot of work. So I did an inquiry amongst all the counties to get a gauge on what other counties are charging. There's a handful that still charge the minimum. The average is 125. Some counties charge 150. I thought that to charge 100, even though it's a large jump at this time, we had never changed it. And so even though it is a large change, I think it reflects our current practice. And actually, we've been doing a lot of work having, you know, charged the minimum for many years. And so even though it is a large change, I think it reflects our current practice. And actually, we've been doing a lot of work having, you know, charged the minimum for many years. One thing I should add to this is that there are cases, not a whole lot, but there are cases where people who are passing through Oregon but do not live here, commit a fairly egregious crime and are placed on supervision with all the packages of requirements on them. But they may not have a high income or any income, but they don't really have any way or any realistic means to live in Oregon, and they're just trying to get home to, you know, another state. Even we've had, we have a guy recently from Georgia. In situations like that where they're legitimately not a resident of Oregon, but by law, they are placed for intake in Oregon, and we immediately have to do a compact. There are, there's time and effort spent on that, associated required fees for that. My office would waive those fees and effectively subsidize the minimum amount for any individual who is under obligation or under a high need of immediate direct transfer requiring, requiring compact. So with the increase to $100, our policy would be to waive that completely for any non-Oregon resident who's just trying to get home. If that helps, you know, make it more fair to how we apply this. It is a large increase, though. We're sort of catching up from years of having done nothing about it.
So Fritz, who actually pays that?
The client does. The client pays the fees.
And so I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of these clients, this is quite a bit of hardship. And so you know, I guess, I guess this is directed at, you know, administration and not just you, but I'm just struggling with, you know, how the methodology that we're using, rather than really looking at the actual cost and the time that it takes, we are, it feels like we're setting fees based on the fact that we haven't done it in a long time. So we're going to, we're going to then double a fee perhaps, or other counties, instead of actual knowing exactly what this costs and, and then setting a fee, you know, directly. So that's, that's just an, again, another overarching issue that I'm having with all of this. And you know, just, and then, you know, remaining fees, we're going to round them up, you know, by $5, but that's actually, you know, for somebody who's on electronic monitoring, that's a daily fee for them. And so $5 may not seem like a lot to us, but for somebody who's really struggling and it could make it, you know, these fees compound for people as you, as you know, you know, and become very difficult and, and get to be a very high price for folks to pay after a while, if they just simply cannot, they cannot pay. So I, you know, again, it's kind of an overarching issue I'm having, and this is just kind of an example. So I'm, I'm going to move on. Thank you, Fritz, for that.
If I can speak to some of that, and while I can't answer quite technically on, on, on the broad topic you, you mentioned, which I, I completely hear you. We, we do, and it goes through the director, it goes through me to subsidize or waive any particular fee. Quite often, we do take into consideration a client's situation where if, if they're in some substantial compliance, or they're getting close to being off supervision, or if they're under hardship. We often subsidize or waive fees on a case by case basis carefully, depending on the circumstance. I definitely want to take into account individual situational, you know, situations, so that basically that money is not the burden, you know, hanging over them to keep them from making progress in, in just basically engagement and completion on supervision. The, the electronic monitoring fee, it is new to us. The company, so we have eight units that that, you know, we can use in various ways to track people, ankle bracelet effectively. The company that we purchased and leased these from charge us a daily fee when we use them of a little over four bucks. The $5 fee makes up for our costs to even use them. And it's, it's, it's a non-jail sanction option for us. So it wouldn't be like, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like great options when someone's in some very poor compliance or even criminal violations. It's an alternative to jail. Jail is one option for us. This, this gives us a tool to do non-jail sanctions. It's not like required, like, oh, we're going to force a fee on them. Although in these toughest situations, it's an, not to say it's a privilege, but it's an, it's an option for some to not go to jail and also maintain community engagement while under much more tight scrutiny for good reasons. And then the supervision fees. They, they may be going away very, very soon, but certainly by January, it could stop as early as October. So Senate Bill 620 was passed to, to address a lot of those issues where people placed on supervision for various reasons, they're, they're in obligation to the state. They don't have an automatic burden of fees placed on them just sheerly for the fact that they're on supervision. So by those going away, it adds some equity into, okay, you're on supervision, but you're not just paying month by month to be on supervision. We are absorbing administrative operational costs to do that. The legislatures recognize that, and I think in the spirit of the law, it's doing the right thing to not, basically, we'll be removing probably the biggest substantial fee that every client has in the relatively near future.
So one follow-up question, Fritz, what happens when people can't pay their fees or they don't pay their fees? What happens? Is jail an option then?
We do not jail people over monetary or financial, you know, irresponsibility or inability, for sure. It is a, it's a technical violation. We track that information. Their balance is, you know, can accrue, they can have a balance that accrues. Our priority, when they have money to pay, our priority really are, it's number one is restitution to victims. Secondarily, it would be court fees or fines placed by the court. Last priority are any fees incurred by my office. And if they're, for various people doing well on supervision and they're getting close, we have waived those at the end. Or some of them, we try to make, make it work out. Worst case, if someone gets off of supervision and still has an outstanding balance that is purely my office's. We turn it over to the Department of Revenue and, and sort of wipe our hands of it. We're not in the business of collecting those after the fact. But if that helps answer all that.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really great. Thanks. I appreciate all of that. So again, it's kind of the overarching questions that I really want to concentrate on here and how we actually determine fees. And then I'm, I'm going to move on to the planning. I have some questions around that. And again, this is, you know, it seems, you know, it's really about, you know, for some departments, we are looking at a 3% possibly an inflationary increase. But in the planning department, we're actually looking at the CPI. So I don't know if that's statutorily required. And the other, the other thing I see again is kind of an overarching, it's not specific to planning department, but it is in the memo that we haven't done an update since 2014. And is that a reason then to turn around and increase fees, you know, possibly more than, than we might on an incremental basis for our citizens? So that, that's kind of what hit me when I read that. And I don't know, Kelly, is it, is it statutorily required that we look at CPI just for the planning department fees?
No, that's just been a consistent department policy for two decades.
Okay, all right, thank you. And of course, you know, looking at the planning department fees, and as you look at the scenic area application fees, you know, I think in the memo, and you can actually see the dollar amounts there on the slide, it's, it's quite a jump for our folks that live in the scenic area. And in the memo, it talks about the 2020 data, cost data and time data, which is great to have actual, you know, data. Now, I, I have a lot of questions about the data. I haven't, I thoroughly intend to look into that data. You know, just because it is being used as why we would consider raising a fee from $640 to $1,960, or from 1,840 to $4,401 in, in one year. So I, I need to get my head around that. And, but really, you know, I was, you know, kind of surprised to see that, you know, I'm, I'm hearing, you know, from, you know, our initial presentation from Kathy Clark, that we've given guidance that, you know, to actually look at these fees for scenic area application. And I was surprised, you know, because certainly in my recollection, what I remember guidance was around really working with the other counties affected in the scenic area and also around working with the gorge commission to really you know, come up with really good effective data that will help us advocate at the state level for more dollars to actually implement the scenic area ordinance. And I don't have any recollection of direction given to actually put this cost on the backs of the citizens that live in the scenic area. So that's my recollection. So I wanted to definitely point that out. And you know, and just one more thing. Back to the overarching issue around a lack of guidance or policy. I mean, I'm, let's go to building codes, for instance. In our packet, there is a sidebar about what happened last year with building codes where, you know, we had a fee increases put forward. And, you know, Commissioner Hagy was, you know, quite adamant and rightly so, that we had such a healthy reserve balance that we should not increase fees in building codes last year. And so it, it just got me thinking about, you know, should we apply that principle to all of our departments? For instance, if we, you know, at what point, you know, when we have a healthy general fund balance, then do we say we don't need to increase fees on our citizens? Or, you know, again, it kind of goes back to a lack of a policy or guidance that really we don't have to go, it doesn't have to hit every department, but just some of these overarching principles that I think I'm struggling with at, at this time. So I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Chair Hagy, may I, from a department level, add to that?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Jill.
Hi, Commissioners Jill Amory, assessment and tax collector for Wasco County. Kathy, from, just to give you a little bit of a look from a department perspective, I think, one, we don't have a lot of fees. We do actually, every time we sit down to budget, we actually do look at what are our costs, what are our fees? We have actually lowered a couple of our mapping fees over the last couple of years. Some of our services, we contract, we turn around and contract them out. So the fees that we charge, we actually turn around and pay a contractor for. So just so that you get a good perspective, and you don't think that we all follow the same methodology which you have suggested. We don't. So happy to have more of that conversation offline to help educate about how some other departments may be doing, how we look, how we do take into consideration our actual costs to do business and how we turn around and charge those fees.
Thanks. I would follow up with that, Commissioner, but, you know, this kind of overarching thing, you know, if you want to go for a fee-based service based off of cost, you, you should understand that most of our fees are highly subsidized already. And if we turn around and we go to actual cost, these fees would go through the roof. And that's not something that we want to do. Our, you know, our kind of, one of our overarching guiding budget principles is how do we stay sustainable over time? Right? And so that compiled with what I've heard from the commission in years past during this discussion, even as most recently, when we were talking about handing management of the, of the gorge commission applications back to the gorge commission was we need to recover costs. And so, you know, that's in particular on this slide, that's what you're going to see is us attempting to follow those directions and recover costs for, for the price of, of doing, you know, this, this work that is actually somebody else's work. And so, you know, there are a number of factors that, that go into that scenario. And kind of this kind of 3% baseline is a good number to trend on if we're going to actually look at this whole concept of sustainability and moving our fees with, with the associated costs. Right? Because your labor cost goes up every year by 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%, whatever the number may be. You know, all of your benefits costs go up, your purse costs go up. So, you know, we're trying to tread water. We're not trying to you know, drive our costs up and put the operation 100% of whatever that individual fee is on, on the backs of our citizens based on what it costs us to provide that fee. So keep in mind, most of these fees are already highly subsidized.
Yeah, I understand.
I agree with, with that principle, but you know, that's kind of the principle that we've taken from a financial philosophy in getting this county healthy. And it's also, you know, kind of what we've taken out of some of the direction that we've heard from the commission in itself, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Tyler. I, I certainly, you know, I think that what I'm seeing is the randomness of, I certainly wouldn't argue with a yearly fee of some sort or fee increase that covers inflationary costs. But what I'm, what I'm seeing in the memos, as I said, is just a lot of randomness. And, and I think that in the, in the responses that you've had, you know, to my concerns, you know, I think we're starting, you know, at least in my, the way I'm thinking, you are putting together some overarching principles and guidelines. And I'd like to see us do some concentrated work around that in order to get some sort of guideline that when, you know, a comprehensive fee increase comes before us, that I have something to apply that to, to say, yeah, that makes sense. Or no, that doesn't quite make sense with our, with our principles that we've outlined. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. A couple of comments. One is, I, I think there, while I, while I agree, there is some differences. I think the, the idea of 3% versus CPI, it's kind of the same thing. Because typically, for the last several years, we've talked about CPI as being basically 3%. So I think that's a good point that it, there should be some consistency. But I think both of those, you know, I think essentially our departments are looking at tracking, trying to kind of follow that CPI. I also think some of our departments do an amazing job of tracking, you know, the, the cost of those, the fees to try to see how they connect to, or to see how the costs connect to the fees. It's a lot of work to do that. So I think, you know, to, to expect everybody to do that all the time is, is going to be probably not reasonable. And I would question for Kelly in a second here, but because I think in planning in particular, we've heard over the years that, you know, across the board, planning, the fees actually cover a certain percentage. And it's, we never collect, you know, fees in the planning department that cover all of our costs. But we are trying, as Tyler said, to try to make sure that we have some reasonable fees that cover a certain percentage of the cost. I think the one thing, the comment that you make about the scenic area stuff, we did actually have a number of discussions about, you know, how we're going to recover those. And you're right. I mean, in some cases, we're looking for outside money. In some cases, we did have discussions about, you know, increasing the fees so that we could somehow cover the costs of those because in particular, the scenic area work is not work that we are required to do. So we're doing it kind of, you know, for good reasons, but you know, how are we going to recover those costs? And the question I was going to ask on that was because there are substantial increases, maybe we look at those over a couple or a few years and try to, you know, implement something, some, some increase over a period of years as opposed to so significant over one year. I mean, it's good and bad, you know, if you increase it a lot every year, for three years, people irritated by that. If you increase it a lot in one year, that's, you know, I'm not sure what's better. But Kelly, just question, just quick question, like, on average, like, what is the percentage of? But Kelly, just question, just quick question, like, on average, like, what is the percentage of coverage coverage that we have from fees for planning?
On average, uh, our fees probably cover, I would say, forty to fifty percent of the actual cost.
Okay, which I think is pretty typical. I mean, it's pretty typical for planning departments to not have fees that cover hundred percent of costs. Is that right?
There is some diversity in the state on how how departments collect fees. I believe Deschutes County is an example of a fee-supported only program. Um, and so their fees fluctuate pretty significantly from year to year. Um, and they do an uh, an extreme amount of tracking, as you mentioned. So they have a pretty robust tracking system in order to ca- to capture all the things that planners do related to permit applications. There are other programs that are similar to us where it's subsidized by general funds. So it just, it really depends.
Okay, be interesting to compare our fees to Ben's or to Shute County. But, okay, so I I thought all your questions are great though, Kathy, because I think those are the kind of things we want to make sure are on the table. We have some time, obviously, between now and October to kind of work through those. I just want to go to Commissioner Kramer. Do you have anything you want to add to the discussion here? Any any questions or comments?
No, it's been a been a good learning session from the two of you. I'm, um, I'm in favor of moving forward with the presentation today. Because we do subsidize heavily. Government does that. That's what we do. And but we need to be a little bit more on track. And, um, you know, we're going to have to face it, folks. We're going to have to look forward to the future and we're going to see more and more what I deem user fees. And if you want to build it, you're going to have to pay for those fees. And, um, I think that, um, I think that our constituents out there, I think are getting ready for that because it's it's right around the corner. And, um, I think there's a lot of good work that our departments do. And, um, uh, we as county, we need to stay with everyone and keep moving forward. We can't be slacking off and then having to having to put fees in there that are higher than we want to. We've already experienced that with the building codes discussion. So, um, so anyway, I appreciate what's going on here. And Commissioner Schwartz, I may offer a piece of advice. For the last eight years, if there's something in the packet that I didn't understand, I usually went to a department head and tried to do a little offline and and understand some of that. So maybe that might be a tool for you to to get some of these questions answered early. Because I already had those answers that that you were asking the questions to. So, uh, because I had done that in in advance. So just something to maybe think about and so, because we don't have a lot of time in our meetings and I think that that's a pretty important piece in working that network. So, um, thank you, Chair Hagie.
All right, thanks. I I do think these discussions are good, you know, and and even I'm sure, I'm sure probably constituents might have similar questions that you do. But so it's good to talk about them. And we are behind schedule a little bit. Do you have anything else, Kathy?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I guess I would ask my colleagues if there is any will to actually, before we look at raising these fees in the way that they've been presented, if there's any will to actually, uh, maybe at a work session, you know, actually look at some guiding principles or a policy going forward. I don't see that we are in a hurry to impose these fees right now. And I think, again, one of the biggest overarching questions for me is not specifically around department by department, how this is done. But really, as an as an organization as a whole, you know, when we look at our general fund balance, you know, when is it appropriate that we absolutely need to raise fees and when is it not? Um, and again, using that example of last year's discussion around building codes, as well as even going to the state of Oregon, when they collect too many taxes, they give it back to the citizens. And I'm certainly, you know, um, so I I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's any will to take this further to the next step so that the next time this comes before us, we actually can, you know, we have a set of guiding principles that we're that we're looking at rather than what I still perceive to be pretty random.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think we can certainly have it as a work session topic. I'm sure Kathy's already noted it, or she is. So I think that's a good discussion to have. I don't perceive them quite as random as you do because I've seen these a lot over the years. But but I understand your your questions and your comments, and I think it's a valid thing for us to talk about. So I think let's go ahead and put that on our next work session agenda and we'll have a good discussion about it then.
And is it something we can do before we see this ordinance again?
Um, I think we probably can have a work session. You said October, right?
It's October sixth. It's it's going to be challenging to get a work session in in that time, but I can look at the calendar and see what I can do.
I mean, we don't have to do this on October sixth, though, right? Do we, or are there time constraints that we have to have a final hearing in two weeks or?
There are not time constraints on that. We have to have a second hearing. No, you can't have it sooner than thirteen days after the first hearing, but there isn't a restriction on it being two weeks after that or a month after that.
But what I would add is that, you know, these fees are fees for the next annual process. And this is our process to set those fees. So I wouldn't want to kick this can down the road and delay this and delay this and delay this. Because then that is impacting your revenue picture and your budgets. Um, and again, it goes back to, you know, the financial sustainability and 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 revenue that these departments are counting on and have built their budgets on.
Okay, well, it sounds like Kathy, you can, Kathy Clark, you can work on, um, I'll work with you on seeing if we can figure something out. And we'll make a plan and I think we'll have a discussion about this in a work session and be able to have a little bit more robust discussion about the bigger picture. Is that okay, Kathy? Kathy Schwartz?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so again, we're going to move, uh, that I I gotta make sure I finished the script here. Wrong script. Um, so we had questions. So, uh, we'll just go ahead and wrap this up by saying notice, no vote will be taken at today's hearing. At this time, we will read the title of the ordinance into the record unless any commissioner requests the that the ordinance be read in its entirety. So do we want to just read by title only? And if so, could one of you read it? You're muted, Steve.
Get unmuted. There we go. Mr. Chair, in the matter of amending Wasco County uniform fee schedule for various county departments, ordinance twenty-one zero zero one for the first reading.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. With that, we'll wrap that up and we'll go back to our regular session. And work on getting back on schedule. The next item is Mopin Grant Application Letter of Support, Lynn Ewing. Are you here, Lynn? Or somebody representing the city of Mopin?
I don't see Lynn here and I don't, I'm sorry, Tyler.
I just said I don't see Lynn on the call today.
Yeah, he was invited and I don't have any in-depth information other than what's in the packet for this request.
Okay, well, we've obviously read the materials in here. Any questions on the material? Do we have, I mean, we're looking for consensus on the letter of support here.
Yeah, and I would recommend that we move forward with that. You know, this is a state process, the rural opportunities initiative. We should be supporting Mopin and their efforts there.
All right, agree. Any questions here?
I've I've had a visit with Mayor Ewing on this and, um, I'm in full support as is his community is in full support of this project to move forward. So, um, I'm good with supporting this letter. Thank you.
All right. Are you Commissioner Schwartz? Are you okay?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so we have consensus to sign the letter of support. Thank you for putting that together, Kathy Clark. And we will move on to our next one, which is the annexation petition hearing. Um, and with, before we go to that, I will go ahead and read the script for that one. Similar script, but slightly different. At this time, we will recess from our regular meeting to open a public hearing regarding the matter of annexing territory to the Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue District to provide fire protection service to the annexed territory. An official recording is being made of what is being said at this hearing. Every one present will be given an opportunity to be heard. Therefore, persons addressing the commissioner are requested to begin by stating their name and address. Speak clearly. Only one person may speak at a time. This is the time for the presentation of testimony. No debate is allowed. The order of presentation will be our staff will make a presentation, then we'll take testimony from anybody wishing to speak. And then we'll have questions from the commission. And then on this item, I believe we're going to take action on the matter. So with that, I'll turn it over to our staff.
Um, thank you, Chair Hagie. Before I get started, I'd like to ask if Gerald Baker had, was able to make it to the call. If you're here, can you unmute and just let us know you're here? He was going to be, oh, I thank you so much. So this is a new process for the county, at least in my tenure. And I don't know that there's anyone working now that has been through this process. Our county council, Kristen Campbell, gave us some guides on what the process is. So it's controlled by ORS one ninety-eight point eight-five. And one of the, it can be initiated by electors or by resolution of district or county board. Today's request was initiated by electors, namely Gerald and Janet Baker. So the process for them was to file a petition with the district to which the elector wishes to be annexed. And that is Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue. Uh, once the petition is approved by the district, it's then submitted to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. The applicant and district are then notified by the county of the hearing date, which I did. Uh, and then two legal notices must be published prior to the hearing to solicit public comment. And, um, as of today, we have not received any public comment on this. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners then holds a hearing, which is what we're doing right now, to accept comment here from the applicant and or district and deliberate. And I do believe I saw Chief Palmer on the call as well. So on July nineteenth, um, the petition was filed by Gerald Baker with Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue on August sixteenth. They met and approved the annexation request and notified the county and the applicant the next day, August seventeenth. And so county notify, I notified, um, Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue and the applicant of the scheduled date of the public hearing and posted legal notices published on the twenty-fifth of August and the eighth of September. Um, findings of facts, maps and legal descriptions were created by staff. Our planning director, um, produced the findings of fact. The GS Department produced the maps and our county surveyor produced the legal description. If the county, if the Board of County Commissioners approves this annexation, then it will go to our county clerk and our county assessor in order to reflect this change in the voting and taxing systems. So Kelly Housley Glover, our interim planning director, this is a very summarized version of her findings of facts, which aren't in the board packet. The territory proposed is not within an existing fire district boundary. And it can be reasonably served or continued to be served by the facilities or services provided by the district. And, uh, Mid Columbia already provides services to adjacent properties. Based on MCFR's approval, the staff finds it's reasonable that the territory can be served by the district. No land will be excluded from the district because this one's being added. And the boundary change is consistent with Wasco County Rural Comprehensive Plan and other applicable refinement plans and other adopted land use regulations or agreements. And Kelly is here to answer any questions on that. So, um, finally, and it will provide an essential service to the conditionally approved dwelling. And no other refinement plans, adopted land use regulations or agreements have been identified that conflict with this proposal. Based on these findings, staff concludes that the proposed annexation is consistent with all applicable laws. Barring any public comments in opposition to the annexation, staff recommends adoption of the order annexing the property located at twenty-three fifty Japanese Hollow Road into Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue District. And that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Kristen is here for the legal items. Kelly is here for any planning items and Chief Palmer can answer district questions.
All right, let's, uh, let's go to Chief Palmer for any comments he might have.
Chairman Hagie and Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, thank you. This is Chief Palmer with Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue. Kathy pretty much hit all the main points. Uh, the board felt it was reasonable and prudent to go ahead and annex the, uh, the property owners, property into the district based on the fact that the the land did lie contiguous with our boundaries. And there are other, there are other property owners beyond them that fall and reside within the district as well. So it made sense to do so. At that point, um, if it's approved by the, uh, the commission, uh, the district will be working with the property owner to, in reference to some water supply issues that we discussed with him. Uh, and he's looking at, um, adding in, uh, potentially a sister to assist with providing some water supply out there. Because it does lie, uh, out to the outward edges of our district. But yet, once again, it it made sense to to go ahead and annex this particular piece of property into the district if the commission so desires to do so. So I don't know if anybody has any questions of me or not.
All right, thanks. Um, let's go ahead and go to Kelly and then, um, we'll go to, um, Kristen, and then we'll go ahead and open up for questions. Kelly, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add at this time, Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kristen, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm satisfied that the, um, procedure laid out in the Oregon statute has been fully complied with to this point.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Nice job, Kathy Clark. Questions for anybody that has talked so far? Anybody have questions, Commissioners?
I don't really have questions, but what an amazing process to go through.
First time I've gone through it.
Lots of eyes and to dot and teased across. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think that that both parties are wanting this to happen. And I think that this is a good deal. And thanks, everybody, for all the hard work and, um, I'm good with moving forward.
All right, thank you. Um, let me ask a question, Kathy. Were there any written comments that we received on this?
We've received no comments and you might want to hear from the applicant today as well.
Yep, we're going to go to public testimony now and we'll open it up. And I'm assuming, Mr. Baker, you might want to say something?
Yes, um, this was a process I wasn't even aware was available because at the time, the reason we're doing this is the, uh, Planning Commission noticed that we were contiguous with the, uh, Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue boundaries. So their request was to make an application and get a yea or nay on this situation, which would determine certain fire protection things, items that we needed to address. The neighbor before us on Eight Mile Road is in the district. And the neighbor about a less than a half a mile above us is in the district. But a little corner of Dad's property on the northeast side of Japanese Hollow fell into it, but the rest of the property did not. So anyhow, I appreciate all the hard work that Chief Robert Palmer did on this process. He was extremely amicable. And from what I understand at the meeting we were at in August, that this is the first time this has ever been presented to them where a property actually actually lies contiguous with a fire district. So I appreciate the opportunity. The reasons we're doing this and moving there is my father is almost ninety-one battling dementia. So I retired and we will inherit the property when the good Lord takes Dad home. So our home would be a permanent home. And so we did want to find a way of what direction we needed to go as far as fire protection for ourselves. So I So I just appreciate all the work that Chief Palmer did and the county commission taking a look at this and and giving their yay or nay on it. Thank you very much to everyone that's worked so diligently on this request.
You bet. And thank you, Mr. Baker. You're obviously a good son taking care of your dad. So that's great. All right, with that, are there any other public test, public comments on this proposed annexation?
If I may, I may make one more, one more quick comment in reference to insurance purposes for Mr. Baker. He will fall, if if this goes through, he would fall into a class nine ISO rating in that regard. So he would be considered as having fire protection, even though it's a higher rating.
All right, thanks for that clarification, Chief Palmer. All right. Any other public comments? And if not, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony and comment. Any other questions from the commission? At this time?
I have none.
Okay, and if not, we can go ahead and we will need a motion to approve the annexation. Do you think we have?
And Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve order 21-041 in the matter of annexing territory into the Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue District to provide fire protection service to the annexed territory consisting of tax lot 1S 13E 1100 and tax lot 1S 14E 01700.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All right, all right, we have a motion to second any discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes. All right, passed. The annexation is moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Baker for being here. And thank you for your work and helping your dad out.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thanks Chief Palmer as well. Appreciate you being here. All right, so we are still behind, but moving on. We are moving to community corrections, Department of Corrections Funding Agreement. Fritz, Fritz is back.
Hello, so this is an intergovernmental agreement that we review every two years. We've been, we've done that since Senate Bill 1145 passed in 1995. It is how we agree with the state on how we implement community corrections at a local level through county oversight and so while all of our funding and authority comes from the state, our operational plan is all coordinated locally through the county. So we've, this contract has not changed hardly at all over all the biennial that I've been in this position. The me, the main bones of it that you'll see change are is basically the budget numbers and how we fund our programs. This piggybacks the biennial plan that I submit at the beginning of every biennium to the state. The biennial plan was reviewed by the local Public Safety Coordinating Council back in August, early August, we reviewed and voted to approve that. So this follows that to basically confirm the contract and the legal details. A lot of their, a lot of that is legal details in there that often don't pertain to my day to day operations, but cover all the bases. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Many of you have seen this before. I see no changes or surprises in it. But it reinforces the biennial plan that I submitted to the state a couple of months ago. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right, thanks Fritz. Questions for Fritz?
I don't have any.
We got no questions for you Fritz. We might have a motion though. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve IGA number 6181 between Wasco County and the Oregon Department of Corrections.
Thank you Commissioner, and I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Thank you very much. Do we have a discussion? If not, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Yes, unanimous. Nice job Fritz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you do. I'm always impressed by how great of a job you guys are doing. So keep up the good work.
I appreciate that. Our outcomes and the numbers, while they continue to look good, we've had various challenges, but we are working through those and we're operationally, we're doing great.
Excellent, thanks. All right, we're moving on. We're still a little bit behind. Hopefully Sheridan can help us catch up. We're going to talk about our hazard mitigation grant program sub application. Sheridan?
There you are. Commissioner Hagy. Commissioner Schwartz, I think you fired me here today. As you all know, this is about the hazard mitigation grant that you guys approved back in February for us to put in a letter of intent. Since then, we have gotten approval from FEMA to go ahead and put in an application under one condition that we combine the request, the letter of intent from the Balla Water District and the letter of intent from Womack Fire Protection District. So we did that and they have went ahead and did the application and now it's sitting in front of you. Including in this phone call, I have Larry as well as the Balla Water District on the phone to answer any questions that you all may have about the application.
All right, very good. Thanks Sheridan. The folks that have have the project, you want to say anything? Larry, not sure who the other person was. You're gonna have to unmute yourself Larry. We're still not hearing you. Should be down on the bottom left. Little microphone. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me? Yeah, all right. I couldn't find that sucker. Okay. The, the grant you have in front of you is for way too much money. They, when we, when we asked for the bid, the only person we could get bid from was a local electrical company. And we thought that the bid was was too much, but it's only bid we could get. We don't believe that it's going to come in at that that cost. Of course, when we, when we started the bidding process, we were told not to worry about that because in the end, before, before FEMA gives us the, the full grant, we would have to get three bids anyway for the project. So I apologize. It looks like it's a lot of money, but it's the only bid we could get during the COVID crisis and so it's not going to be that much. I hope that doesn't affect the bid. These generators are badly needed here in Womack. During the, during the heat spell this, this, this summer at the community center, that's also a cooling center for, for people here. And of course, the electricity went out. So, you know, it was just bad news all around. And then plus we have the wildfire danger. The generator at the water district is about, I think it's 41 years old. And it doesn't start half the time. And we have about a two day supply during the summertime of water in the tank. So we lose power. You know, all the residents in this area will lose water also.
All right, well, thank you for the update. That's good to know and it sounds like a great project and we're hopeful that the grant comes through.
Yeah, we are too. We're really dependent on it. I'm actually sorry, sorry, it, 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 it looks like it's, it's so much money and we, we agree that that bid, when it came in, we were shocked. And we've done some research since then and it, there's no way it's going to cost that kind of money, but we just could not get anybody to even answer our phone calls. It was that bad, you know.
All right, but we understand. Thank you very much. Is there, Sheridan, you said someone else was here?
Yes, I believe. Don Denny is supposed to be on the phone. But this is a combined application, so.
Okay.
Should be fine.
Okay, well, very good. We'll go with Larry's comments. Again, thank you for being here. So we are looking for a motion, is that right?
We'll be requiring signatures as well.
I'm looking for the, what we're trying to do here Kathy Clark.
I didn't write a motion for it, although you can certainly make one. It's an application, not an agreement. So consensus is probably adequate.
Okay, so Commissioners, we got the consensus, we had consensus with Kathy Schwartz?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I just, I'm sorry, I apologize if I missed it, but Larry, what, who do you work with? I'm sorry, I, and I don't know your last name. I'm sorry.
My last name is Warren.
Warren.
And I'm a board member with the Womack Fire District and the EMS Services. I was also chairman of the board for the water district, but I'm no longer with the water district. My term was up, so. I can, I can speak to their needs too, because I was with them for a long time. Dawn Denny, who is the general manager or office manager, I should say, at the water district. Was supposed to be here, but she may be having problems like I was trying to, trying to get logged in, so.
I'm here Larry, I just thought you were doing so well. I didn't really have anything to add to your comment.
It always works to build it up, okay.
Yeah, well, thank you. Well, thank you very much. And I, I so appreciate, like I said earlier, when this came before us, I really appreciate you taking advantage of, of this grant. It's, you know, and given you know, everything we're seeing in our communities around, you know, fire and drought, it's just so important that communities do, you know, step up and take advantage of these mitigation efforts. So I just applaud you all. And, and really just thank you for all your volunteer service, both of you. Thank you so much.
Larry has done an amazing job on this project and he's the one that should be commended, really. He's, he's just gone above and beyond.
There you go Larry.
Thank you.
Kudos.
I was gonna say I also accept checks, but that part wouldn't be, that would be a good.
Well, hopefully you get a big check from the federal government.
Yes, I do. Made out to the community.
All right, very good. So I think we're good. We have consensus on this. And then Sheridan, if you could help me or Kathy can help me, I think I need to sign this. And I'm happy to do that. And I have consensus for my fellow Commissioners to do so, so.
And I'll probably be able to sign it electronically. It's not actually complete. There's a few things missing in it. Our EIN needs to go in there and such as that. So I'll work with Sheridan and get that information filled in and I'll, I will apply your signature.
Awesome. All right. Well, thanks to both of you for being here and we're crossing our fingers that we, we help you get some money here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you for all you do.
You bet. Thank you. All right, we're moving on and we're still a little bit behind schedule, but we're trying to catch up. Joel Mattson, are you here? Kathy Clark?
He's here. I, I just made him a co-host in case he had a.
Okay. Here he is.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I'm Joel Mattson with the Mid Columbia Housing Authority and Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation. And I was asked to provide a brief update this morning on our work and partnership with Wasco County, particularly for the the two parcels that were kept off of going to public auction and transferred to us here earlier this summer to try to advance affordable housing production. So as you'll recall, earlier this summer, the Board of County Commission authorized the sale of the surplus properties to Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, instead of taking those properties to public auction. And the intent of that sale is really to assist in facilitating affordable housing production on those sites. And so the purchase and sale agreement was signed first part of June. And Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation has since paid Wasco County approximately $95,000 for those properties at 310 East 10th Street, excuse me, West End Street and 821 Garden Court. And one of the contractual provisions that runs with the land that we agreed to is for those properties to be on the tax rules for Wasco County. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And again, just thank you to the County Commission for authorizing this sale, instead of taking those properties to, to public auction. So while we were working on the transfer of the deed, we were simultaneously reviewing the condition of the properties and ability to obtain title insurance in order for future debt to be placed on the properties. So in our initial conversations with the title insurance, those, those, we anticipated being able to obtain the title insurance. And then we later learned in the process that we could only potentially obtain title insurance prior to a 10 year waiting period post foreclosure. So we're still navigating that title insurance element. And just to be clear, without that title insurance, it's not feasible for CCHC or a home buyer to obtain financing for acquiring the building or, or for putting additional debt on the property for building more. So that's still something that we're navigating again with title insurance folks. And then more specifically for the property of 310 West 10th Street, I wanted to share that we see the potential for redevelopment of the site beyond just the existing single family home. We did receive clearance from Orient State Historical Preservation for the removal of the home. We completed a hazardous materials survey for lead and asbestos, which identified need for, for removal of such as part of the demolition. And as I mentioned earlier, we continue to assess the costs both on the demolition, but also on the redevelopment as we work alongside with addressing the title insurance issue. With regard to the 821 Garden Court, the existing mobile home was built in 1977. So we're anticipating removing that mobile home and replacing with new. Similarly, on this site, we need to navigate the title insurance in order for a future home buyer to obtain financing for that home. So that's my brief summary I wanted to share with you all this morning. And again, thank you for supporting the sale of those properties to Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation that will eventually become affordable homeownership opportunities for folks here in the Vals.
All right, thank you very much Joel. Appreciate that. I have a question, maybe before we go to the other Commissioners. So the, the tent, the West 10th Street property, you talked about redeveloping that. Are you thinking of that as a single family or multi-family redevelopment?
So the zoning appears to allow more than just a single family home. It is still our goal to produce affordable homeownership opportunities. It may not just be with the existing single family home. So townhome, home style development may be feasible there. So we're taking that slowly in part to really, we want to get more more return on our investment if we can than just the single family homeless in existence there.
Very good. The, the title insurance issue is interesting. Is the, specifically the weight, is that because it's a foreclosed property?
Yeah, exactly the case. So there, it, it's become more prevalent of industry standard to have title insurers basically say, no, we're not providing title insurance until a 10 year period. However, there are ways to navigate that in advance of the 10 year period. So one of the ways, and I just want to thank your staff there at Wasco County, both the legal counsel and Jill Amory for helping to provide some of the detail around the process that Wasco County takes in the tax foreclosure right around notifications and they, we had, we had, you had great files that we could access that are getting us closer to resolving this title issue before that 10 year period. That's one way to be able to obtain that title insurance prior to the 10 year period. And then there are other, a couple of other legal strategies that we're exploring to get that beyond just waiting it out for the 10 years, essentially statute of limitations.
Yeah, a 10 years is a long time. All right, Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Joel?
Well, I think that, thank you Joel. And I asked Joel to come to kind of give us a, an update on what was going on with those properties. Is it fair to say some, that this is really the first time, certainly you've entered into something like this with Wasco County and there was some lessons learned around the title insurance because that was something that was certainly, I believe, an unknown. So next time we'll understand that better and. So next time, we'll understand that better and, uh, recognize that there are, there are some restrictions. Um, but hopefully we can navigate around those, as Joel said, and, um, you know, get the, get these properties to affordable home, homes as we had, uh, hoped to. So lessons learned all around, really, and, um, but I think still it's a good thing and, uh, we will get some folks into homes and, uh, once we get through all of this paperwork. But it was a little bit of a shock and, and, um, apparently it's pretty common practice around foreclosed properties that it's difficult to get this title insurance for a lengthy period of time. Who knew? So now we do.
All right, very good.
Sure, Hagey, can I?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
No, um, so Jill Amory, as our tax collector, um, just to, to shed a little light on that. That's unfortunate that it was so unknown because it is actually a national, um, issue. And it's one of the reasons that I personally take time to attend the Oregon Public Property Managers Association meeting every November down in the Valley, because it is something that, um, does affect the resale of those properties. And I, you know, assume in the due diligence that that's pretty common knowledge. Unfortunately, we did have one local title company that was providing it for a short time, but they got such pressure from their, their corporate that they had to stop doing that. Good news is, Joel, we may have an avenue for you. We may have another title company that is not local, that may be looking at providing. So it is an issue again that we have been, the association has been working on. Um, it is a national issue. It's not a surprise. It is common practice that it wasn't provided. Um, so just unfortunate that they didn't know that until we got in, deep into the sale of this one, but hopefully we can work through it.
Jill, any question?
Certainly.
Oh, uh, I'm just curious, so like, thinking about like, whether it was a, a transfer, a sale, to Mid Columbia Housing or a private party, does the title insurance, it's the same thing for anyone? Is that correct?
Correct.
So that would mean that like somebody that bought the property, for them to get title insurance and/or, so it's kind of a cash deal. It's more likely you can do it as a cash deal, but if you're trying to go get debt on the property and you need title insurance, that's where the roadblock comes. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think we had some that did purchase and were in that window of a local company offering it. So they're the ones who do our pre-work, and you would think, especially someone who does the pre-work for the title, would be more than likely to offer the post-title insurance. Um, and this person who redeveloped a couple of properties in those years, actually, I believe, was able to get title insurance. So it's unfortunate that it had changed prior to this transaction, and we weren't notified prior to this transaction. So it was actually a surprise to me as well.
Well, okay, Joel.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna add on to that, that the, uh, it was, it was, uh, anticipation that we were going to be able to access that title insurance, even though it is in this more industry standard to have the longer period. So, you know, I agree with what Jill's saying and look forward to still navigating that. Um, and as you mentioned, uh, Surehaggy, um, these, these, um, transactions really lend toward people that have cash, um, to be able to invest in those because they're not worried about their indebtedness or obtaining debt to be able to do their desires on those properties. So at the end of the day, our organization is aware of those risks. We still made the investment with acquiring the deeds from Wasco County because we feel strongly that the value of, uh, being able to produce affordable housing, this is one way that we're, uh, working toward our goal of adding more affordable housing into the Dallas. It may take us more time than we thought, maybe, or desire to do that. It's still an important investment that our organization is willing to make in purchasing these properties from Wasco County. And eventually, we're going to produce on those, on those properties.
All right, thanks, Joel. Um, Jill, just clarification too, I guess. So even, even if we sold it to a cash purchaser, obviously, and they could redevelop the property, and then they wanted to sell it, you know, out in the normal market, there would still be this potential challenge with title insurance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it kind of runs with the property, um, somehow, so interesting. I mean, it's interesting that we haven't even heard about this issue until now. Um, I'm a bit surprised, but interesting.
Yeah, imagine being a Washington County who has hundreds of foreclosure properties and auctions every year. I mean, they, that's why we work as the association to try and solve that problem, because it's a bigger problem in those bigger entities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, Joel, thank you for being here. Thanks for the update and best of luck. Uh, I hope everything's going well for you and your organization.
Thanks so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, very good. All right, moving on, still behind, but we're trying to catch up. Kathy Fitzpatrick is with us to talk about the gorge regional transit strategy. Welcome, Kathy.
Thanks so much. I'm really excited to be here, to have the opportunity to give you a brief update and overview of the gorge transit, regional transit strategy, which, uh, McAd initiated last year in twenty twenty. Um, as a, as a way of, of developing a roadmap for the future of public transit in our by-state region. And, um, this strategy will, uh, will probably be, you know, our first, uh, by-state regional transportation plan uh, when we're finished with, with the phase two, that, that will finish up next year. So phase one, we got started last year. We, um, we built on a foundation. We, the intention was not to create a new plan. The intention was to stitch together the existing transportation plans that, that we all had, the counties and the cities and the, and Southwest, uh, Washington, um, Regional Transportation Council. So all of these plans, ODOT, WashDOT, you know, you can think of all of the transportation authorities that we have, um, pulling all those plans together and looking out at, at what they look like, um, across the region. And really, really looking at policies, looking at goals, seeing if there's any conflict, seeing if there were any, um, uh, recurring themes and priorities. And, and then pulling together partners and stakeholders last year. Altogether, we were able to meet all together in January. Um, and, and pulling together everybody in the room who has, over the years, um, expressed a real interest and need for, uh, public transportation. So, so, you know, whether it was the Housing Authority or Oregon State Parks, Washington State Parks, all of our, um, local leadership, state and federal agencies, human service agencies, uh, that community college. So all of these, these very, very different, very different representatives of our community, um, all got together in the room and sort of looked at each, at one another and said, wow, you know, we all depend on public transit in one way or another for the people that we serve. And, and this is a really important subject for us. So, um, so, so the, the conversation really focused on, well, what are the challenges that your organization are trying to meet with public transit? And what are your vision and goals? What, what, and, and then from, from the, the individual vision and goals, can we put together a collective vision and a collective list of goals? Which is, which is what we've done in the foundations memo, which, which, uh, I'm sure Kathy has included in your packet. Um, you can see on page six, there, there's, there's a really nice snapshot of the, of the vision, um, which I'll, I'll read out to you. Uh, the vision statement, "Public transit supports thriving Columbia River Gorge communities by providing access to critical services, higher education, jobs, and outdoor recreation while protecting the natural wonders of the gorge." And of course, you know, the, um, buried in, in that, that, that very short statement, um, are, are, are objectives towards community and economic vitality, which includes workforce mobility, addressing traffic congestion, addressing affordable housing challenges. Uh, uh, a, an objective to, to be able to provide really high-quality service and experience for the people riding the bus, um, looking at environmental stewardship. You know, of course, our, our partners, United States Forest Service and, and others, um, such as ODOT and WashDOT have, have that as a primary goal. Um, and then, of course, financial sustainability so that we can afford to, uh, to, to meet all of, all of the, the prior goals. So, so that's, that's a quick snapshot. Uh, the page is a little bit more, goes into a little bit more detail. Um, but, but this first phase was really intentionally building those partnerships, um, recognizing that public-private sectors that were all dependent on public transit. Um, but, but let's, let's create a consensus around vision and goals. And, and so that, that is what we did. Um, our phase two, which will launch this fall, um, or, or, uh, early winter, is going to be more nuts and bolts. It's going to be about, okay, how, we got this vision. How, how do we get there? How do we get there from where we are? So, so we'll, we'll be looking at, at the real, you know, how-tos. What, what are the strategies for, for getting us from where we are now to where we want to be? Um, so, so we're really excited. I think, I think everybody's ready to, um, to go from pie in the sky to, to some real, uh, boots on the ground, like, like, let's just get there. And of course, as you all know, we've been, the last two or three years, we, we've been, we've been running towards the future at breakneck speed. So, so, um, regionally, the public transit has, has expanded enormously. We can get someone from the Wyeth and Lou site to, um, hell, Indian Health Services at Toppenish using public transit. We can get somebody from Goldendale to the VA Clinic in Portland using public transit. And of course, we have the gorge pass now, so it costs them thirty dollars a year to ride the bus. So, so we can get somebody now from Stevenson to the Columbia Gorge Community College, uh, site in, in, um, in the Dells. So, so really exciting, um, that, that we're already, we're already working on, on progress. But, but we do need, we do need a regional plan in place. Uh, we're really excited to, to be wrapping this up and within the next year and, and then starting to chip away at our goals. Um, and so, so my, my request to the County Commission is, um, a concurrence, if we can, um, have a, you know, maybe a short discussion, um, question, answers about the vision and goals, but, but, um, I am seeking concurrence on our vision and goals. Uh, so we can move forward and start into the nuts and bolts.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy. You seem slightly excited about this.
Oh yeah, just a little bit.
You know, I would, I would totally agree, you know, thinking about transit, like go back years ago and when it was really hard to get, you know, from here to Hood River. Uh, and so if you think about transit, all the progress that's been made, and a lot of it has to do with McAd and yourself. So kudos to you for, for all you've done, um, even up at the mountain. I work at the mountain and I see signs that are related. I know you had your hand in all that stuff, so it's great stuff. All right, so questions, uh, comments, uh, for Kathy. She's looking for, uh, concurrence, uh, on the vision and goals here that's in the packet. And anybody that's on the, uh, the meeting here with us and haven't, hasn't had a chance, you can go get that information in our packet. Um, it's a nice, well-done, uh, plan and it's got lots of information about what they're working on doing, so commissioners.
Yeah, um, great work and I'm, I'm, let's move forward.
Yeah, I would concur, Kathy. I, um, did read through the presentation and aside from that, I mean, as Commissioner Hagy said, you can see the results in the community. I mean, you can just see, uh, more buses, the, the fixed routes. Um, lots of things are happening, so I completely, I think the plan is excellent and it's only going to get better from here. Thank you so much for your work.
So it sounds like we have full concurrence on the vision and goals in the plan that you are presenting to us. Is that correct, commissioners? All right, so let the record show that we think you've done an amazing job and we have, you have our full concurrence and, and hope for the nuts and bolts stuff to come in the future.
Thank you so much. One last question is, how would you like to participate in this next phase? Is there, it, do you want more hands-on? Do you want more updates directly to the commission? I know that, that you all separately receive these updates, um, with the different committees and, and, um, organizations that you belong to. Um, so would you like a more regular update schedule or how, or do you want to be part of our stakeholder group? How, how would you like to continue to participate?
That's a great question. Let me ask a question, my fellow commissioners, because I was thinking one of you is on the transportation organizations, committee, something. Is that the case or not the case, or is it Tyler?
Well, it's, it used to be, I was on the Transportation Advisory Board and you'll remember, um, that board was discontinued because there was just some overlap and duplication, so, uh, no. But I do, you know, I do receive updates from the various meetings I attend, whether it's McAd or the Senior Advisory Council. Um, so I feel like I get regular updates. Um, so, I mean, if you wanted to come, you know, twice a year or something, or if there's something really significantly different or something really exciting that's happened, it's, it would be always great to hear from you. Um, but I don't, I don't know that I feel the need to get regular updates at this meeting. Um, but I'm, I'm open, certainly.
Sure, I'm currently staffing all of these meetings as well.
You're what, that Tyler?
I'm currently staffing all of these meetings as well.
Okay, so you're well aware of what's happening then?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, and also being a McAd board member, I'll work directly with Kathy and, and, um, be that conduit to the two of you as we move forward in the future.
Okay, that sounds great. So it sounds like we, I'd like to see you, people that don't know Kathy, she, she used to be the administrator of Moser and I would see her like every month practically, so I miss seeing you, your smiling, happy face. So it's great to see you and I'd certainly welcome you back whenever you think we can help um, or you want some input from us, like today, you know, in terms of concurrence. Um, you know, I think we're here to help and support and we appreciate the work that you and McAd is, are doing uh, in regard to transit and transportation, so thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for all of your support. All three of you have been so supportive in, in individual and collective ways. Thank you.
All right, Kathy, have a great day. Bye-bye. All right, we're still behind schedule, but only five minutes, um, at this point. So we're going to go to the Columbia Land Trust Letter of Support, Sherry Kearney. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hi, Commissioners. I, I'm Sherry Kearney and I'm here on behalf of Nate Ulrich, who, uh, we, we work for Columbia Land Trust. And I'm, uh, Forest Conservation Director for Columbia Land Trust, but I know that Nate has worked with some of you and he's the lead, but he's on vacation, so I'm his proxy today. But we have a letter of support, a draft letter of support to you, and we're seeking your support for our application to the Federal Forest Legacy Program for lands in, in the county. And there's three aspects of our proposal. The majority of the lands of the whole sixteen thousand acre, they're all owned by SDS Land Company, Timber Company. And the purpose of the Forest Legacy Program is to keep lands and forest production. That's the primary goal. So the majority, uh, the, the first part of it is to, uh, buy an easement that snuffs out development rights and keeps it in forestry. And then a portion, the, the second aspect of it is to, uh, have a portion of it go to the Dells watershed for, uh, their water quality. And then lastly, we seek to buy, uh, land down near the community of Friend that would be match for the whole proposal. So that's the proposal, and I know we have the letter in front of you, and I would just be happy to answer questions or share more in depth if you'd like.
All right, thanks, Sherry. Um, questions for Sherry? I have, go ahead, Kathy.
Well, you can go first.
Well, I was just gonna ask the perennial question that usually we ask, uh, you guys whenever you come. It's related to taxes. And so the question is, you know, what, what we, my big issues are, one, we don't want property going off the tax rolls. And two, we don't necessarily want public access to go away for public land. So some of that has been addressed, some of it I haven't really understood in here.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. On public access, that's a core value. And so through the Forest Legacy Program where easements are purchased and development rights extinguished, public access is a, is a value that would be baked into those easements. So the, the traditional and historic access, regardless of who owns these lands into the future, um, public access is, is a public access is is a vital piece and 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 we will have that in the easement. And and public access, of course, on the community-owned lands, the municipal-owned lands would be assured and then on Columbia Land Trust lands as well. So that is a strong and confident assurance. And on and on property taxes, yes, we have listened and heard and heard from you and we do pay property taxes on our ownerships. On the property in this proposal that Columbia Land Trust would seek to buy and have as match down near the community of Friend, we are, we are hoping to put that into the wildlife category, which would still be, it's, you know, commensurate, as you all know, with special use for forestry or or other production. So we think it fits that the best for our management approach. And we are, we have made the commitment to pay property taxes. The other lands will stay in property taxes because the easement is just a restriction on development, but it'll stay in production and private timberland ownership. So those taxes will continue as they've always been.
All right, Kathy, did you have questions?
Um, yeah. This is complicated. But in regards to the Dalles watershed area, my understanding is if you were able to purchase that, you would possibly turn it over to the city of the Dalles. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and that's
For their ownership and management as part of the watershed quality and and it's juxtaposed with their current ownership.
Okay, that's great. And I really appreciate this work that you're doing. And also, I understand that there's possibility that the Forest Service might purchase some land around that area as well. You know, just to further, you know, preserve that land. So that is, I mean, I think that's just a really good thing. And, you know, I've talked to Cameron about that. He certainly has interest and the way he explained it to me, why they have interest is how important it is to kind of not have this checkerboard areas of, you know, public lands here that you manage a certain way than a private land that's managed differently. And then then next door, another public land that it's, it's great to have more of a continuum of of management of of lands, especially in a watershed. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. That those are our goals as well for continuity of management and for an overall matrix that's producing forestry and water quality. That's that's wonderful. And public access.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hagie. Now I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So we, what we have is we have a letter of support here for our consideration and all we need is consensus on that. So I'm assuming it sounds like we have consensus?
Yes, for me.
Well, we got it from Cameron. All right, very good. Sherry, you have consensus from us. I, anything else for us?
No, wonderful. Thank you very much. And then we also will stay in touch with you as we continue to do work so that you can know what we're up to and and we can hear from you about your priorities. So I really appreciate it.
Excellent. One final question for you, weird question, but you're not related to Matt Kearney, are you?
No. There's not many Kearneys out there though, but no.
No, there aren't. And then the the name is spelled exactly the same, so.
Yeah. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks for being here.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
All right, let's see. Ooh, we're actually slightly ahead of schedule. Is Brian Walsh here with us yet? Or somebody from Avangrid?
No, I saw him on the on the list.
He's definitely on the list, but I don't see him here. We are a little bit ahead of schedule. So why don't we go ahead and we will go back up. We do have a consent agenda that we skipped over from his minutes from our September 1st meeting. Did everyone get a chance to look those over? Any questions, comments, or changes?
Mr. Chair, move approval as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for today. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes unanimous again. All right, very good. Why don't we go ahead, we'll have a quick open for public comments. Again, anybody that's here for, that has a comment for the Commission now is an opportunity for you to say what you want to say and then we'll go into Commission call and hopefully we'll burn a little bit of time and hopefully Brian will be here with us shortly. So any public comments? Anyone has a good story for us? All right, hearing none, we'll close that, we'll go to Commission call. Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, I was just offering Commissioner Schwartz to go first, but you know, I I've been gone for 10 days, so I'm just getting back into the mix of of all of this. And I guess I'm going to send a plea to all of you on the call today that have that have stayed with us and hung out through our meeting today. COVID is real. And if you've got some unvaccinated folks in your world, please have a chat with them. Try to talk them, try to talk a little bit of sense into them. Got a, got a chosen brother that's in a hospital now that is pretty, pretty tough shape. And he is one of those that is unvaccinated and refuses to get vaccinated. And a simple shot in the arm, a little inconvenience, I think will put us all at a little bit better odds of of beating this nasty disease that we got floating around amongst us. And we've got to do the best we can to protect one another and make sure that we move forward with our lives to enjoy our friends and family. So with that, just a plea to you all to reconsider and try to further the efforts that our Public Health Districts across the state and across the nation are trying to combat. So thank you for the time.
Thanks, Steve. And also, as commented by the Public Health officials, it's really expensive being in the hospital, being taken care of for COVID for a while. So the shot is free, the the hospital stay is not. So Commissioner Schwartz?
Well, I would just like to echo Commissioner Kramer. You know, this thing is getting closer and closer to all of us. We're all having, you know, family and friends affected at this point. And it's, it's just so unfortunate that people are what I would call victims of a misinformation campaign out there. And so I just echo Commissioner Kramer's plea to get vaccinated. Please seek out the correct information and definitely reach out to the Health Department if you don't know where to get that information. It's not always readily available to everyone. I see it everywhere, but that doesn't mean that everybody sees it. So thank you, Commissioner Kramer, for that personal plea. I have a lot of stuff, actually, so you can interrupt me if, is it Brian gets on the call? Is he there?
Kathy Clark, can you keep an eye out for him and interrupt us when he joins us?
I will. I saw someone just come in with a phone number that I don't recognize, which could be Brian.
Hi, this is Brian Walsh.
Oh, there he is.
Yay.
Yeah.
Saved.
Yeah. I thought I heard my name just as I joined, but yeah, sorry. We just had a major organizational announcement, so I'm just running from that to here. So I apologize.
No problem. So Brian, we're just running a slight bit ahead of schedule. So if you're ready, we'd go ahead and take your update on the bake oven solar project. And if you want a little bit of time, we can continue to blab on here.
Well, if you can blab just for a second, I do, am I able to, Kathy, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can. I will make you a co-host.
Okay. And my
I can't see, I can't do that with just your phone.
I I know that, hold on, I just, my browser crashed, so just one second here.
Okay, so why don't you guys
So keep blabbing.
You guys work on that and we're going to go back to Kathy and you can start on your long list of things for Commission call.
Okay, the first one, just, just an FYI heads up. I I think you all probably received a plea. Can you remember who it was from, another Commissioner, I believe, on supporting the Vietnam War Memorial Request? And I just wanted to, I'm going to be working with the Veterans Advisory Committee here to possibly make a recommendation that we do contribute to that. I think that is a really worthwhile effort and to honor those Vietnam War veterans. So I'll I'll put that on agenda item, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention if and when the Advisory Committee suggests that to us. And then on October 6th, there is going to be an Affordable Housing Roundtable. I think you've probably seen it from 12 to 130. I think that would be important for all of us to attend if possible. I'm actually going to be a panel speaker just because of the work that we just recently talked about, about, you know, something that a county can actually do to help in affordable housing. So I'll probably be just relaying, you know, the information about the foreclosed properties and how we handle that here. And then I think you received
Can you send the information to us?
Yeah, sure. I will. I'm sure you'll be invited if you haven't gotten it yet. Yeah, and then there's another one that Jessica Metta sent out on October 7th from 3 to 440. She'll be doing kind of a recap of some other housing, you know, things that have been going on around the state. And I think that's going to be another one. And you did get that email. It's October 7th, 3 to 440. And so I think that's another one that would be really, really important to attend if you can. You know, I think that one thing that's becoming more and more clear is how important housing is as a key infrastructure component for economic development. So just keeping that on the radar and learning more about, you know, how we can assist in that, it would be, you know, great if we could do that. Keep going. Brian, you ready?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Yeah, keep going. You're doing great. Give me a little more time.
All right. Um, so also, we received notification from Senator Merkley's office that the $2 million is headed to the gorge for economic development that was promised to us for many, many years. And through the effort of our congressional delegations on both sides, Oregon and Washington, it looks like we're finally going to get that money. So that's good. I'm sure you received that, right? You got that? Okay, great. And then I did want to, you know, when Debbie Ferrera was talking about climate change, it kind of reminded me of an article and I'm going to put the, I'm going to put the address in the chat here in a second. But there was a article that came out on Oregon Public Broadcasting and it was, it cited a reach, a research study that was conducted by Investigate West regarding cities and towns in the Pacific Northwest that were most vulnerable to the effects of climate change. And they looked at 152 cities in the Pacific Northwest and it was really interesting that the Dalles was pointed out as being one of the top two communities that found to be extra susceptible to fire, flooding, and extreme heat. So I'm going to put that article in the chat for you. So you all can read that, but that's just certainly supportive information to what Ms. Farrar brought to us. So there you go. And one last thing, you know, I've been thinking throughout this meeting and I did want to respond to Commissioner Kramer's advice that he gave me earlier. And I did want to reassure my colleagues that I did reach out to departments on the issue of the fees and and certainly not every department, but I did have a lot of questions and I did reach out specifically. And, you know, the questions and the comments that I brought forward are more around the things that I, I want to be sure that the citizens know that I'm thinking about and the concerns that I have. And so those were the issues that I brought forward to the public arena. So just to reassure that I I do reach out to department heads for my specific questions. So thank you. That's all I have.
All right. How we doing, Brian?
Having a bit of technical difficulty here with the bandwidth, but I can
I'll do my update then.
Okay.
Give you a little more time. All right.
Thank you.
So a couple of things that I wanted to bring forward. The first one is redistricting. So I think you've probably all heard about, you know, what's the, our legislature is tasked with redistricting every 10 years based on the census. And they're involved in that now. They just actually wrapped up the committee doing redistricting, just wrapped up. And just so you know, I did, I did comment at on Monday, I think it was on Monday. That was the last day that you could make actual comments to the committee. And so I did make comments to the committee and I did as well provide written comments to the committee as well. And just so you know, those were my comments. They weren't, you know, on behalf of the Commission. I did note that I was a County Commissioner because that's an important component of making those comments. And I thought I would just talk a little bit about like redistricting. So my my concern is, and if you've looked at the proposed maps, there's actually three sets of maps that came out of the committee. And my biggest concern is the the maps that seem to have some traction, maybe the most traction, or the AMAPs. And what they do for us in Wasco County is is two things that concern me. The first one is it basically ties us to the metro area. So they go in, you know, they include, instead of our district now, which is primarily on the the east side of the Cascades, it actually moves us over to the west side of Cascades, moves us into Clackamas County and in some cases, maybe Multnomah County in terms of the congressional district. And so I am concerned about that because I think that when that happens, what typically happens is you see, you look where the bulk of the population is. And in this case, the bulk of the population in most of those maps will be in an urban area or an urban-ish area like the Portland metro area. And when that happens, my concern is we generally tend to lose representation from the standpoint that, as you know, now, we have a representative that lives in town. Like here, we have for many, many years, John Huffman and then Daniel Bonham. And we've had a person that, you know, we know that's a neighbor and can help us. In in this case, you know, I am concerned that, you know, we will lose at least that connection and really the representation for more rural things. The second thing, and probably as important, all of these maps, well, the the maps actually break Wasco County into three. Right now, we actually have, we're broken into two and this, the map would break us into three different segments. So we have three different areas that would be represented by, you know, a representative, a senator, and then congressionally, I'm not totally sure on the congressional thing. But so again, that kind of, you know, there's a plus side to that, that maybe you have multiple people that you can talk to. But as there, there is a downside to that, that, you know, we have such a small part of any of those in there that oftentimes or sometimes, you know, they just don't pay attention to you. So those are my concerns. That's what I put forward. I like the idea, I mean, I think the idea of us, you know, my main idea was I think the Cascades are a pretty good demarcation for, you know, west and east side. And I would hope that somehow we could be in a district that is primarily on the east side of the Cascades and and keep it rural so we could kind of push. And AOC meetings were actually last week and then the Legislative Committee meeting was on Monday. And Steve, I don't think you were there, right? Okay, so it was a decent meeting, but we did have a bit of a an interesting situation that came up and it was around the vaccine mandates. And one of the committees, I think it was Public Safety, actually brought forward a proposal for AOC to support some sort of a resolution. It was a little confusing as to what it all was, but it basically was saying, it was trying to make the point to the governor that the vaccine it was trying to make the point to the governor that the vaccine mandate is creating some, will potentially create some real challenges when and if it goes into place on the October, when we're hearing lots of people are going to be quitting, particularly in terms of our first responders and stuff like that. So that was what the issue was about, was wanting AOC to kind of push that issue to say, hey, we got some concerns about this. It was a very divisive issue. So as the discussion started, it was clear that it was going to be one of those issues that was kind of a east and west issue, you know, or rural and urban issue. And somebody did vote to table it. So we didn't have to go down that path and take a vote on something that would create kind of controversy and divisiveness within AOC. And I did support table and because I just didn't see it was, it was too and the the vote on the tabling was 20 in favor of table and 19 again. So you can see that it was a very divisive issue. And I just, you know, unfortunately, my personal opinion is when we have those kind of situations at AOC, if we can't have strong support for a position at AOC and we're going to be half and half, it's really difficult to take those positions. And you know, sometimes we have to, sometimes we don't. But just so you know, that happened on Monday and, you know, I I personally think that it was good that we didn't have that battle. And and then the last thing is, and Brian, how you doing?
Um, yeah, I'm reinstalling Zoom right now. So
Oh, there you go.
I'm getting there. I'll be right there.
I have a couple more minutes. So the last thing was just an update on Center for Living. So just so you know, we, we, we are in the process of our our director, Dr. June Gower, did resign or has, is in the process of resigning. So she'll actually be with the organization through, I think, the 22nd. We are or did actually making Al Barton the interim director. So, you know, this has been, as you know, a really challenging period of time and mental health is, you know, always a challenge in for so many reasons and so many ways. But this has been a particularly big challenge for us. Start out with financial challenges, which we had going before we hired our new director, then COVID came. We have a union in the process of forming, trying to work on a union contract. So there's just been a myriad of things, but just so you know, we are in transition. We are discussing, you know, kind of what we're going to do, how we're going to move forward with new leadership. And I'm hopeful, but it won't be easy. It took us a long time to find our last director, Dr. Gower. And she worked really, really hard to try to get us to a better place. We still have a lot of financial problems. We still are trying to finish our, you know, get our first union contract in place. And a lot of our people, as you know, have left the organization. So from a staffing standpoint, we are extremely low. And probably the as important as that is that that is not really a unique situation to us as a local mental health authority. We've gotten a report a couple of times and there was a a report that was given to the legislature just recently about the crisis, about it's truly a crisis of local mental health workers. Right now, the state of Oregon is, right now, positions that are posted, I think it was like close to 700 positions in the state of Oregon amongst all the local mental health authorities, which is a huge amount. And so all of us are really struggling from a workforce standpoint. And, you know, we're, we're no different. So just so you know, that's the status and update at Center for Living. We're working really hard to try to bring stability to the organization and I'm hopeful, but it will take some time and we'll see. So there you go. Questions? Any questions for me on any of those? All right. If not, I see Brian Walsh in the meeting with us. So maybe you're here with us. There you go.
I am. I am. I'm actually in my office today and I I have a mask on, so that's why I'm a little muffled here, but but I don't have a, I don't have a camera on my my work monitor here. So apologize for not being on video, but hopefully
No problem.
Could see my screen.
Yes, we can see it. Very good. And we welcome you here. Just for folks that don't know, there's a very large project underway in South Wasco County. It's actually the first renewable energy project since I've been here. I mean, there are obviously there's some small ones here and there, but I think, Brian, if I'm correct, this is the first commercial renewable project in our county.
That's, that's right. Yeah. And you actually, you have two of them. You know, they're, they are adjacent projects, but yeah, under construction is the bake oven, 60 megawatt AC, like a 8 megawatt DC project, which is bigger than our, the largest operating project in in Prineville, which is our Gala project. And then next to that, over twice the size is the, what we call the Daybreak Solar Project. And it's 140 megawatts AC. So really exciting together, the two, you know, which they'll appear to the, to the public eye as just a one single 200 megawatt project. So you know, spanning over about three square miles of of solar. So really exciting. But I put a couple of slides together here just to give you an update on on where the project is and and how we're progressing and where we are. So just a quick agenda, I just want to go over for those that aren't familiar with the project is kind of an overview and add to what I just said on on Bake Oven and the Daybreak projects and construction status, where we are today and the current schedule for the rest of the project. And then just kind of a red zone update, quick blob with just what we're doing right there. And then want to briefly touch in, touch on QI Fiber Optic Initiative that we've been working with, with Matthew and seeing if we could do something. Does that sound okay?
Awesome. Sounds great. Thanks, Brian.
Yep. And then what, how about, what's my time limitation here?
You're the last, you're the last person on the agenda. You could go all night if you want.
Okay. Well, I won't do that to you. But anyways, I'll jump right in. For those not familiar with the project, the Bake Oven project is just outside of Mopin. And so we're about 12 miles, 13, 14 miles outside of, depending on which part, part of the project, just out southwest of Mopin on Bake Oven Road in between Chanico and Mopin. We permitted the project through the Oregon Department of Energy through the FSSEC facility siting process as a 303 megawatt wind solar storage project potentially. And right now we're building 200 megawatts of that 303 megawatts of the capacity that we have at BPA's Mopin Substation, which is our point of interconnect with with Bonneville. And then we'll be, we're building or will be building, starting to construct an 11 mile gentai or generation tie line back to the, from the project to the BPA Mopin Substation. So and this is roughly the the site control boundary that we have for the project under lease. And then Arthur, it was nice of us to to grant us a public right of way along Bake Oven Road, too, for the last part of it. But and this is our micrositing area, which is the the pink hatched area where all of our facilities will fit within that boundary. And then as you might be familiar, these, this is the large enter tie transmission line corridor, the three BPA lines that connect the DOWs to Los Angeles. So so anyways, that's a geographic marker to get your bearings. Again, this is just kind of a rough, rough layout of what 303 megawatts would be. We're not building anything on the north side of Bake Oven Road. So that would be a future phase three potentially. And so we're building everything on the south side of Bake Oven Road, which this is Bake Oven Road that's dissecting this array. And we're building everything basically on the south side of the road. This is a little, little detailed map of Bake Oven. This is the 60 megawatts. So they're going to start construction on the south end of it. So this is Larry and Vicky Ashley's property. So all 60 megawatts will be on Larry and Vicky Ashley's property. Larry and Vicky's house is right here, just for your reference there. And this is Bake Oven Road that's running on the, on the east, northeast side of the project. So I will have one main access point. Hopefully you can see my cursor. I will have three access points into the project area off of Bake Oven. This is the south. This is the center. And then there'll be a northern one for the Daybreak Project. So again, this is the 60 megawatt portion and then the 140 megawatt portion will will be right against it and adjacent. And this is the Collector Substation. So when I show you a couple of pictures, I'm going to show you the access road that we built for the central location. This one is not built yet. And then pictures of the substation. So this is where the substation will be when we get to those pictures. And then this is again, the central substation, the central access point. And then this is, these are the panels, the inverter rows, which are the black lines. And this is what we call the Daybreak. And then from the central substation, wait, I'll just pause. Can you guys see my mouse?
Yes, we can.
There's the delay. Yeah. From the central substation, then the gentai will will get built out and off to the BPA Mopin Substation, again, about 11 miles away. And again, Bake Oven Road, Larry and Vicky Ashley House, number one, Larry and Vicky Ashley House, number two, Bob Cryin, AMK Ranches, the other home there. So those are the three closest homes, residences to the project area and both participating landowners. Again, Daybreak, I mean Bake Oven or Daybreak will be mostly all on AMK Ranches, which is Bob Cryin, Steve Ashley. So this is their property line. So the majority of of Daybreak will be on there. And then a small portion of Daybreak is on Larry and Vicky Ashley's. The other pictures I'll show you is the the construction laydown yard that we're building, which is this box next to the substation. And to to date, what we've done is we, we moved forward with the high voltage piece because that was kind of our longer lead item and and building the substation, getting the transformer. And so we split the scope of construction work into high voltage. So that's everything from the substation to Bonneville. So the transmission, 230 overhead line, the substation, that's one scope of work. And the rest of it, all the solar panels, fencing, roads to the panels, inverters, everything to the substation is under another EPC contract, construction contractor called IEA or White is their engineering. So one's the construction company, one's the engineering piece. But and then SCS Atwell is doing the high voltage. So SCS Atwell got started a while ago. They started, well, I guess they got started in in March and they've made a lot of progress. So I'll just skip down to like what the pictures are here. This is our job trailers, modest job trailers right now. This was just to support oven grid and SCS on the high voltage side. We'll be adding other job trailers here for IEA and White, which I think actually happened this week. So IEA White is just mobilizing to the site last week or the week before. And so they're just, they're just coming into the project area. So this is just the access road and that temporary laydown area, just off of Bake Oven Road. This barn in the background is behind Larry and Vicky Ashley's house, just for for reference. And then you can see the overhead poles for that the inner tie transmission line corridor in the background. This is the beautiful road that we built to the substation and that that's out there. And this was the first activity that we started to build, but it's, it's ready to handle all the traffic. And also the delivery that we already took delivery of the, this is the major power transformer to take the voltage from 34,500 KV up to 230,000 KV. And so this is what the main work that has been done out there. It's a lot of it's not that exciting, but it's it's, it's what's going on underneath the ground, which is is pretty exciting out there. So this will be the Collector Substation. Again, the substation will then support and this transformer will support all three phases of the project. So up to 303. And again, we're just building 200 right now. That's what we have clarity on. But the other 103 megawatts that we believe has a high probability of happening at some point would come into the same central substation. So sharing existing infrastructure along with the the overhead line back to BPA. And then these are just control buildings that are part of, you know, where the communications and control happens for for managing the substation. Again, there's a lot going on underground, but you can see the major power transformer, the background control buildings. But this has been the main focus of SCS and Atwell on the site. The next part I just kind of put in, we're building this is a fixed tilt system, but we're building a tracking system. May not look exactly like this one, but it'll be a single panel and portrait. And that's what the IEA White will start doing. So it'll be building all of the solar generation inverters, roads, everything up to that project Collector Substation. So in the end, it'll kind of look like this. But I have just a couple of pictures of what what activity is about to start happening. And that's the the main trenches to get back to the substation from all the inverter pads will be the first activity. It'll look similar. These are pictures from our Gala Solar Project in Prineville. But the the first piece of the construction will be putting in that medium voltage, 34.5 KV lines back to the substation. They'll cover them up and bury them. And then all of the the solar panels will feed into these main from the inverters will feed into these, the 34.5 lines back to the substation. So that's the first activity that'll happen on site. And then they'll go out there and they'll lay piles in the ground similar to this. And then they'll come around with rigs to to actually then drive the piles into the ground similar to this. And then they'll build a racking system to go on to the piles. And then eventually it's just a giant assembly line. And so this is the Collector Substation at Gala, but you'll have delivery of the modules in compartments. You'll have a construction laydown area. You can see that the piles are laying down on the ground, but it's just a giant assembly line. So while they're still haven't even driven piles on the north end of the site or one end of the project site, they'll be completely completed on the south end. And it's just like I said, it's just a general, a giant assembly line and they move from from one end to the other and they'll move south to north, starting with the Bake Oven Project and the 60 megawatts first, and then moving on to Daybreak and so on. But it'll be just one long assembly line process. And so in the end, this is what Gala looks like when it's done. You'll have inverter pads and an area around each inverter pad. And then you know, your main trenches that were dug go go down the roads, back to the Collector Substation, picking up all the power from the inverter station. So that's briefly what that looks like. This is our Y East project and and just another picture of of Y East during the final phases of construction. So in Sherman County, three inverter stations, smaller 10 megawatt project, but but similar. And then timing on the schedule, right now, we are expecting to bring the first 60 megawatt project online in September of 2022. And then a Daybreak, though, the rest of the 140 would come online by the end of by the end of December of 2022. So just about a three month delay between the energization of the two points. I guess I'll I'll pause there and I can flip back to any, any, any pictures or anything that you would like to see.
Great stuff, Brian. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Kathy, go ahead.
I don't have any questions about the technical aspects, but maybe when you're done, I'll have some more generic questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah. Either we talked about employment and 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 workers in the workforce right now. Just wanted to touch on that a little bit. The high voltage portion of the line and the work that's been done, we've had crews of, you know, around 30, 30 to 35, 40, somewhere in there working on the the substation. It's not the more labor intensive portion of it. The larger portion will be under IEA White when they're building all the solar facilities. And we're, we're expecting somewhere in the 200 to 225 employees on site during the peak construction process. And when we have all phases, you know, going on the site where they're, you know, it's still driving piles, still assembling racking, still putting panels on, you've got electricians, engineers, surveyors, all that, kind of in the middle of the construction process will will peak with that. And so I expect that that timeframe will be again, probably in the spring of 2022 when we hit that peak for labor and and workers that are on site.
Question on that, Brian?
Yeah.
So how, like so far with even the group, the the crews that are out there now, what, how's the housing component look? And what's the plan for that?
Yeah. You know, a few, a few lucky folks have have Yeah. You know, a few, a few lucky folks have, have found a couple of places that are actually in Mopin. You know, we urged Mopin to kind of change their rules on short-term rentals, which they did, but they only opened it up to a certain portion of the zoning, which didn't, was pretty much south of the bridge. And as you know, from Mopin, there isn't a whole lot of housing on the south side of the bridge. So it didn't help that much. But, you know, there are a few people that are living in Mopin. The, the other folks that are coming from, they're coming from the Dalles. Thai Valley opened it up, so we've been working with Mike, Mike Irie, what's, first with an I, Mike. Oh, I forget it. He's the economic development guy. Anyway, so they, they've made available like trailer camping, short-term. And there's other folks working on building tiny homes right now in the Thai Valley too. And so we put those folks in touch with the general contractors. So we, we sent them a list of available housing along with that in the, the trailer park that's actually in Mopin, down on Bake Oven Creek, there in the middle of town too. So there are some people renting leasing spaces. A lot of the construction workers have their own mobile homes or trailers that they bring with them and look for sites. We're also working on potentially allowing short-term housing along Bake Oven Road and getting that approved and moving that through for some of our construction, for all of our landowners along Bake Oven. So, and that, that would be a CUP. And honestly, we, we hoped we would be bringing that forward sooner than we have right now, but we still have that opportunity, a little more time before all of the major labor gets out there. Other folks are, are in the Dalles or they're coming from Madras.
Yeah, thanks. I know we talked about that early on, so I was just curious how that was shaken out.
And then I think Chanico is trying to ban short-term trailers or trailers, allowing that. I'm not quite sure. And that's, that's something I've heard secondhand. But Chanico doesn't want construction workers in their town. But yeah, I haven't dug into that one yet either, but they do have a trailer park there in, in Chanico that would be helpful and close to the site. So I need to reach out to the, to the mayor and talk there about what, what the truth behind that is.
And have you guys chatted with Antelope at all as well?
Haven't chatted with Antelope. I haven't.
A little farther away.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Commissioner Kramer, questions?
No, no questions. The mayor in Chanico is Mr. Trainer. So Goldie's no longer in, in there, Brian, so.
Okay.
But I've driven past the site several times, seeing, seeing the development going along. Was invited out to a meeting earlier this year during fire season, got to meet a few of the contractors. Things seemed to be progressing. And, and also, Brian, we need to reach out with Tyler Stone to potentially have a conversation about our fairgrounds for potential housing. So I think that we could do some relatively long-term stuff through the winter there into spring. So, but anyway, that's that. And thanks for the update. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I'm just a couple of other, other things here, Commissioner Kramer too. But yeah, definitely we talked about the fairgrounds and that's where Mike, last name starts with an I, I can't.
Earl Davis?
But that, or maybe it is Mike Davis. Yeah. Yeah. We've been in communication with him too as well. He also provided a couple of other addresses for potential short-term rentals in Thai Valley as well. So all that information gets, you know, put into a spreadsheet, provided to the contractors as potential housing. Can't require them to do anything, but we can point them in the right direction. And they're usually always interested in shorting their commutes to the job, to the, to the job site. This is just transportation routes. Right now, most of all, all of the materials, you know, will be coming down, you know, 97 into Chanico and then back up Bake Oven Road the opposite way. And, you know, we did, we're limiting and asked them to eliminate any traffic on the bridge in Mopin, especially this summer. They, they did a good job of, of avoiding that. Also keeping speeds down. We're, we're very, very strict about safety and, and speed limits and abide by those. We have a zero tolerance policy for speeding. So if you're caught speeding, you're kicked off the job site and not invited back. And yeah, we enforce that and keep, take it very seriously. So the major, the, the biggest, heaviest load for the entire project has already been done. That major power transformer is, is the heaviest, even though it's, it's delivered on a lowboy. It's our heaviest load, but that's already been delivered to the site. So the rest of all of the materials that are coming on the site and, and the volumes of it will be on normal tractor trailer loads. So all the piles, modules, panels will come in and containers. And those will route down, those will route down 97 too as well into the site. So, so we're trying to limit it as much as possible, the traffic that comes into Mopin. You know, I think it's mostly limited to workers commuting from the Dalves to the site would be coming through Mopin. But those coming from, from Madras or, you know, have been asked to come up 197 and up to Bake Oven Road from the south. And limiting really the impacts to Mopin. And so if we do hear, you know, any, any other complaints or anything like that, please do funnel them our way so we can react and, and make changes to them. The last thing, I, I did have a good, just a couple of other items just on, on the red zone. Appreciate the, you know, again, your approval of the red zone for both projects. Right now, we are entering into, and I just received the Workforce Oregon. One of the, what the requirements under the tax payment was to enter into that First Source Hiring Agreement and have that posted with Worksource Oregon. So just in the background, working with executing that First Source Hiring Agreement and then making sure our HR department, when they go to post all the jobs for the, the permanent tech, technical jobs for operations and maintenance, that they are posting those with the Workforce Oregon Office and, and the Dalves. That's all I had on the red zone. And Q Life, is, is Matthew on right now?
Matthew is here. He just was looking in here and I assumed he had something to say at some point.
Yeah, I meant to connect with Matthew just to, to align ourselves on who, who's going to say what. But, you know, Matthew has been very persistent and, and helping me drive the, the conversation about Q Life. And, and I really applaud his persistence and, and helping me push my internal teams on, on seeing about exploring the fiber. We've looked at it a couple of different ways of, of extending fiber optic along our Gentai. The first couple of answers were no, just from an engineering standpoint, you know, just barring fiber. There's like of our existing strands or attaching new strands of your own of Q Life that, that, that they could provide and then leasing those back. But for, for different reasons, we're, we're finding our way through. We have some limitations on FERC requirements as far as then actually, you know, like leasing fiber optic out to any other party and actually charging for it. So that, that's something that we can't do. But right now, where we've settled on and, and working within the regulatory framework is that we think we can pull off six to 12 strands of fiber that we're installing and provide those under an agreement to Q Life. And again, this would just help, you know, extend the fiber optic service from the BPA Mopin Substation to our Collector Substation or, or the closest pole on Bake Oven Road, right by the access road. You know, it, it doesn't get you any connectivity to the south, but it's one step closer. Should you be able to connect fiber or bring fiber from a, from the opposite direction or connected. So Matthew, I'll pause there and see if you wanted to, to add anything.
I just appreciate your kind words about my persistence instead of detailing how annoying I've been.
Not annoying at all. I, I, I have so much going on. It actually has been very helpful. So it, it hasn't been annoying. I, I, we really want to do something to help the community in exchange. And I think this is something that, you know, Matthew and I feel is, is low-hanging fruit. But me navigating the inter, my internal challenges and getting through it, he's been immensely helpful in, in doing that. So I'm definitely on board and a supporter of it. And I think it's just our next step, Matthew, is just working through like the, the agreement. So we've talked about an irrevocable right to use the fiber for Q Life in the county. And of course, that has some challenges because we're limited to like if we have to decommission the facility and the fiber optic and the poles, I'm like, it can't be an irrevocable right. But we just need to, we need to work through those terms and conditions. So what happens at the end of the life of, of, of the Bake Oven Project? You know, we're required to decommission and we take down the poles and the fiber and just working out how, be, you know, the county could take over. Q Life could, could maintain those poles and fiber, you know, at post, you know, post Bake Oven.
All right. We're already talking about post Bake Oven?
Hopefully there'd just be a repower, but yeah, you know, we gotta unfortunately have to address all those, those one-off situations that take about, you know, 30, 40 years in the future. But, yeah.
Very good. All right, Brian, do you have anything else?
I don't. I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but appreciate the opportunity. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The, as you're talking about end of life, what then is, what is the potential first phase of, of, of this? Is it 30 years? Is it 20? Is it 40?
Yeah. I mean, I think we're once, you know, looking at some of the, you know, other renewable energy projects that are, you know, wind projects, right? That are, you know, built in the early eighties. They're either still operating and been repowered or, yeah, they're repowered and they have a new, you know, a new lease on life. I, I think for, for us and for solar panels, you know, that efficiencies will, at one point sometime in the future, whether it's 15, 20 years, that solar panels will be so much more efficient that it'll become cost-effective to repower the solar site. So I, I, I don't think in today's climate and environment and after reading the, the recent UN report on climate and the crisis, that solar panels will be here for a long time, even if they're, you know, they're repowered. So and repowers, as long as the, you know, the integrity of the racking and the framing and the steel stay in place, you know, repowering is as simple as taking the panel off and putting a new panel on and some of the wire and replacing the wiring. But I, I just think, and it's yet to be seen, right? We haven't seen commercial utility-scale solar. It's just still in its infancy, so it's yet to be determined at, at what happens and how long the longevity of, of today's modern panels holds up. But I think we're, you know, it'll be 30, 40 years and potentially longer.
Very good. Thank you.
Kathy, you had some comments slash questions?
Oh, I think my questions were around housing, so you answered that. So Brian, excellent presentation. Really brings it home, brings it real from kind of a, you know, a vision to what it's actually going to look like and the process. So I really appreciate your presentation and the update today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd love to have you out just, I mean, I think seeing is believing. I mean, I think you'll, you, we'll, we'll see other projects come through for permitting in Wasco County, both at the CUP and also at the state level. So, you know, when we get all phases of the project up and running, when it, it, you know, when it looks something like this, you know, where you can see everything going on and understand the impacts of the project and see it. So you can, you know, weigh in on, on utility-scale solar and its construction. I, I'd love to have all, all three of you out or one at a time if we want to avoid a quorum. But I think it'd be helpful for, for you to see it. And anyways, I, I can coordinate that with, you know, with Matthew or Kathy if you have interest in doing that.
Yeah, I would definitely say we're, we're interested. Speak for the rest of Commissioners. And I think it'd be great to have a work session and an official tour out there at some point when you feel it's appropriate. So I, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I really think it's helpful. I mean, we recently gave a tour for, of a Click Attack County Board of County Commissioners. All, all three of them came out along with the, the organized opposition group that's, that's out of Goldendale that's now, now fighting that. And we had all of the opposition out there. Were able to, you know, debunk a lot of like the misnomers on, on solar, what it looks like when it's done. I think it's tremendously helpful. So it makes my job easier. So I'm, it's, it's a pleasure. It's not a burden earning on me. I'm actually, you know, enjoy doing it. So and anything, even for AOC members too as well. Because I know that it's hitting the AOC and, and there's issues there too as well and property tax. So happy to do that. So.
Perfect. I, I have to, one question I had, can, is there any chance we can get copies of these slides? Is that possible?
Yeah, yeah. I just.
You might want to.
Yeah, my comms director, but yeah, it's make sure, I just got to check that box real quick. But I, I don't see any reason why I couldn't show these.
All right. I figured that was the case. And then the, the, the last thing I just wanted to comment on was I'm, I'm, I'm amazed that we're here today and that this project is underway. Brian, how many years have you been working in Wasco County?
Well, I was, yeah, I was just revisiting this with, with the Carver. So yeah, I think I came to that in 2008. I think we originally submitted our interconnection request in 2007 to, to Bonneville that enabled this. And initially, they were submitted as the wind project and the Imperial Wind Project or the former Bake Oven Wind Project, now Imperial. First, that's when I first got out there and, and stand up, and signed up Dan and Jimmy Carver. And Dan just passed away, by the way. I don't know if you heard that. But yeah, I'm forever grateful to him and taking a shot on a, on a young developer coming out here. And, but anyways, it was, it was Dan that really enabled all of this to happen. So even though it was a wind project to start with, but yeah. It's, projects can have a circuitous route to getting to, to the finish line. And this one definitely did too. But, you know, we're right now working on putting together, you know, a hybrid wind-solar project to bid into a couple RFP opportunities involving Imperial in the third phase of, of the Bake Oven Project, which we call Fundset Builder. And so I'm hoping, hoping we can bring a hybrid project to Wasco County.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. I, I remember when I first met you and, and all the time that has passed thinking that all the, the resources and effort that you guys have put into trying to get a project in our county is, has been amazing. And it's really gratifying to see that we're actually, you know, or things are happening and it's actually going in. So I'm very happy that you guys have stuck with us and are able to, to make this investment in our county, which is going to be great for the south part of the county. And in many, many ways, as, as well as the, you know, the environmental positive factors and the fact that we have some renewable energy. So thank you very much for sticking with us.
Right back at you, you know, that's, you know, I think the first time that we met, we talked about like how the South County needed economic investment and development and how that would really be beneficial. I, I've heard that in other counties. And then when they get into it, they've changed their course or different commissions and changed their tune on supporting, you know, development in certain areas of, of certain counties. But you stay true to that. And we really look forward to being a good neighbor. We've made a, a couple sizable donations already into the community for the, the shoots, for the track and field. And we're working on this week on finalizing a couple of agreements to make donations to the Bake Oven Chanico Fire District, to both fire districts down there, to support them as well. And hopefully we can get there with Q Life and Fiber. So anyways, look, look forward to being a good community neighbor.
That's awesome. Awesome news. All right.
What, what, well, sorry, one last plug since I have you, I have the three of you. One thing that's going to be on the horizon for the solar. One thing that's going to be on the horizon for the solar industry, and we're already seeing it with Bake Oven Daybreak Projects and the fire projects that we have under construction in the Pacific Northwest, there is a shortage of labor. And I think you probably already know this and probably discussed this probably earlier today, I'm sure, in one way or another, right? It's hard to find people, it's even hard to find union folks. And there's more and more pressure both on the federal legislation that's being proposed, both in the House and Senate, for apprenticeship utilization of union labor and just union labor in general. I just know this is going to be a pinch point for finding labor and technical labor to build these projects, and we're just at the beginning of trying to reverse what we've done to this planet, and there's going to be a lot of renewable energy that gets built. And we need union, technical prevailing wage jobs. So if you've looked at the federal legislation for the tax bill that's out there, it requires it for the projects. And so I don't know how to solve this or come up with solutions, but really, if we can start thinking about training programs for technical or union labor, how we can support that, whether it's from the tribes, whether it's other things, like, I don't know how to, I just want to throw it out there, I'm just raising this red flag, and I don't have the solution, but you guys get so much input and have the ability to affect things and spending money and to do it, but I just can tell you that there's going to be a shortage, there already is a shortage of labor.
Yeah, that's definitely not the first time we've heard that. We, I'm not sure if you've connected up with Dan Spotts at our local community college, but we, they just opened almost an eight-million-dollar technical facility for, you know, training of trades, and they're in the process of schooling up programs and everything. So if you haven't had a chance to chat with them, I will certainly make the connection, and you can at least be aware of what is available here, and maybe there's something that can happen there specifically to help in this regard.
Yeah, I mean, funding scholarships for training programs, something along those lines. I mean, I'd love to drive the Yakima tribal members and approaching them, too, for attending, you know, training, electrical certification training in the Dalles at the community college. So I think anywhere where we could get the technical training done, whether it's under scholarships, whether we can do grants that way and start training our workforce for what this green economy that's going, it's coming, it's coming, so.
Excellent. Well, I will go ahead and make that connection, and I'm sure there may be something good come out of that.
Chair Haggy, just to add to that conversation, at the next board session, we have someone from a union conglomerate to come and talk to the board about apprenticeship programs for Wasco County and in our region.
Very good. All right, Brian, thank you again for being here. We very much appreciate the update. As Kathy mentioned, this is just fantastic to see this actually happening, and I definitely will be looking forward to a tour out there at some point in the future.
Great. Thank you all for your time. Thanks for the opportunity. All right.
All right, Chair. Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, with that, that is the last item on our agenda. And is there anything else left to discuss? Anything, commissioners, do you have anything else?
Yeah, Chair Haggy, I'd like to make a personal note here on my feelings about our county board commission meetings. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to share with the two of you that this meeting is for the three of us. We have approximately six to seven hours a month that we get to have a conversation that we can cuss and discuss and talk about what we want to talk about. And while this meeting is a public meeting, we don't have to necessarily engage our viewers, our public, to these meetings. And in my opinion on this, I get to talk to my constituents thirty days out of the month, and that's the time that my constituents need to give me their information, their questions, their concerns, their comments, and so that, so that the three of us can have a conversation amongst ourselves, instead of trying to engage our community as well. And so, just a thought, and wanted to throw that out, because, you know, we can't, this is basically the only time the three of us get to share ideas, debate about certain issues, try to come to conclusions and solutions. And when we overload with more public comment and questions, et cetera, et cetera, we get bogged down in, and we don't have a chance to talk. While I encourage my constituents to call me, my public cellphone is on the webpage, as both of yours are. And I think that we need to ask our public to engage more than just the time that we have to have a meeting. So with that, I don't, I'm not looking for any response today, just think about it. We can cover back up on that with some work session time, but we don't meet enough, we don't have enough time to chat. So I just want to throw that out and have you think about it. So thank you for the great conversation today, and thanks for letting me rant.
Okay, all right. All right, unless there's anything else, I think we will call this session one to conclude and wish everybody well and be safe and take care. Bye-bye.